I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of November 2nd, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here.
And would you like to make an announcement about accessing the meeting?
Yes, Madam Mayor. In order to participate in the City Council Meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment, or call 1-669-900-9128, and use webinar ID number 82258128345. To raise your hand or to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom Meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor, and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. So we're going to switch things around in the agenda a little bit. So we're going to have a proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for fill the boot for MDA Day. Whereas the International Association of Firefighters has been working with the Muscular Dystrophy Association in their fight against the neuromuscular disease for 67 years, and whereas the Santa Maria firefighter members selflessly donate their time and energy to support the battle against muscular dystrophy by filling the boot each year for the MDA. And whereas the Santa Maria firefighters raised more than $22,367 for MDA during the last Fill the Boot campaign, and will again be contributing to this great cause through their Fill the Boot event on November 13th, 2021. And whereas their daily service to communities and their dedication to muscular dystrophy associations, local firefighters contribute greatly to the well-being of all residents, and give so much hope for families fighting neuromuscular diseases. Now therefore, the Mayor, Alice Patino of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes November 13th, 2021 as Fill the Boot for MDA Day in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to support the efforts of the local firefighters and Muscular Dystrophy Association. Thank you. And this proclamation will be accepted by fire engineer Nick LaMonica?
Honorable Councilmembers, I'm sorry, honorable council members of the public, my name is Nicholas LaMonica, and I'm a fire engineer with the City of Santa Maria Fire Department. On behalf of the City, Santa Maria, and Santa Maria Fire Department, I am grateful and humbled to accept this proclamation. For more than 67 years, Fill the Boot has been a strong firefighter tradition, giving families with muscular dystrophy in hometowns across America hope for the future and support for today. Since 1954, firefighters have supported MDA with unwagering drive and relentless passion. Because of your support and our MDA fundraising efforts, 11 new drugs for neuromuscular diseases have been approved in the last five years, and so many more are coming. These treatments are life-changing for MDA families where walking, talking, and even breathing can be difficult. This cannot have been done without our firefighters and the support of the cities like ours. Please come out to fill the boot on Saturday, November 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on the corner of Cook and Broadway. Until a cure is found, we will be filling those boots together. Thanks.
Next, we have the Order of Business as a Retirement Resolution, and Councilmember Cordero. Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I read this, it's about Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz sitting down here in the front row. Having come from this group, I think part of the complete evolution of law enforcement is you get to watch, I get to watch people like yourselves that go on and came on when we came on, while I was on, and see your successes. And all that builds in us as, I'll just say, senior members. And I'm sorry you won't get to witness more of that, you know, and it's really unfortunate. But it's a great loss to our community that you've decided to have to leave now, and we're going to miss you. So, without further ado, this resolution is for Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz, and whereas Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz has been employed by and has faithfully served the City of Santa Maria since March 1st, 1999. And whereas Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz has been committed to the philosophies of community-based policing and to the ethics of treating all people with dignity and respect. And whereas Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz has provided the residents and businesses in the community with extraordinary professional law enforcement service and great compassion. And whereas Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz spent much of his law enforcement career with the city, participating in narcotic enforcement efforts for the city, and with the County Enforcement Task Force team. Whereas Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz has led the police department and oversaw the dispatch team during the city's Motorola upgrade project, working closely with the information technology staff. And whereas Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz's commitment and devotion to the duties have contributed measurably to the quality of life that residents and businesses and visitors enjoy in Santa Maria. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council, the City of Santa Maria as follows. Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz is commended for his faithful, distinguished, and devoted service to the City of Santa Maria community, and congratulated on his retirement, and he and his family are wished good health and many years of happiness, passed and adopted at the regular meeting for the City Council for the City of Santa Maria on the second day of November, 2021. And Madam Mayor, I make this, I read this in form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second on that motion? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a comment.
Okay. Hearing done. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Soto. Sorry, Councilmember Waterfield. Who's over there? Councilmember Waterfield. Yes. Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to congratulate personally. I know Sergeant Alfredo for a while, and I just want to say thank you for your service, and thank you for, both of you, for your service. And yeah, I wish you have a good retirement. Have fun. You have a wonderful family, and I'm looking forward to staying in touch with all of you. Thank you again for your service.
And Sergeant Ruiz, would you like to make any comments?
Wow, this is surreal. Thank you very much to everybody here present, council, Madam Mayor, Chief Schneider, Chief Tugle, and all the friends and family that are joining us. I want to thank my wife and my kids. Two of them couldn't be here because they're at work. But from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank the City of Santa Maria for providing this tremendous opportunity, not only to myself but to my family, to serve my community. Since I was a child growing up here in Santa Maria, growing up at 212 West Williams, The Projects, never would I have imagined that I would have made an impact to our youth in our community and to our local business community. In law enforcement, we deal with a lot of bad people on a regular basis. But I want to remind our officers that are remaining here in Santa Maria, the Chief of Police, that the majority of the people that we come in contact are very good people and very good citizens in our community, thus making that a very easy job over the last 25 years. I began my career in law enforcement at 19 with the Contra Casa County Sheriff's Department, and my number one dream was to work and serve the City of Santa Maria, the city that provided, again, an opportunity for myself and my family. This is not a goodbye. I'm sure you will be seeing me around the community as I intend to be involved in youth activity, in drug prevention, and in any capacity that I can serve my community as a retiree. Lastly, if I may, I quiero darles las gracias a la comunidad de Santa Maria por brindarme esta oportunidad. Como hijo de padres inmigrantes, nacido en Michoacán, México, mis padres me trajeron a los dos años aquí a Santa María. Santa María es mi casa. Y quiero que cualquier muchacho padre de familia que me esté mirando ahorita, si Alfredo Ruiz lo pudo hacer y pudo hacer un cambio en la ciudad de Santa María, todos estos muchachos lo pueden hacer. Quiero hacerle un llamado a la comunidad mixteca. Hay una necesidad tremenda para oficiales de policía aquí en la ciudad de Santa María que hablan el idioma español, inglés, y mixteco. I know you guys are out there understanding three languages, Spanish, English, and mixteco. There is a tremendous need for those young men and women to join law enforcement, to join the fire department, and any other government position that can impact and make a difference. Without that being said, again, this is bittersweet. I love the City of Santa Maria, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And Alfredo, I would like to thank you on behalf of all the City Council, and I've got a couple of really good committees I know that you would fit very well on. So I, and I've got your number, so.
I got one that needs to be filled now.
Thank you very much, and I thank your wife and family, because it's a whole-family project when someone is a policeman or a firefighter. You know, it takes the whole family. So thank you very much, Mrs. Ruiz. The next Order of Business is another retirement resolution, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Oh my goodness, it is such an honor to be able to make this presentation. Law enforcement is very close to my family. My son is a sergeant in Arizona. His wife is a detective in Arizona. My father retired from law enforcement, and I have numerous nephews that are in law enforcement. And all I can say is I'm proud of both of you, and it is such a great honor to be able to make this resolution to a very fine young gentleman, Mr. Rafael Torres. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, commending police officer Rafael Torres for his 24 years of outstanding service to the City of Santa Maria, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas Officer Rafael Torres has been employed by and has faithfully served the City of Santa Maria since February 8th, 1997. And whereas Officer Rafael Torres has been committed to the philosophy of community-based policing and to the ethic of treating all people with dignity and respect. And whereas Officer Rafael Torres has provided the residents and businesses in the community with extraordinary professional law enforcement service and great compassion. And whereas Officer Rafael Torres has served with pride and distinction on the Santa Maria Police Department Honor Guard teams. And whereas Rafael Torres' contribution with the Explorer Post 115 and his service as school resource officer has enabled him to make a positive impact on numerous youth in the community. And I thank you so much for that leadership. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows. Officer Rafael Torres is commended for his faithful, distinguished, and devoted service to the community. Is congratulated on his retirement, and he and his family are wished continued good health and many years of happiness. And congratulations to your family as well, because it takes a team. Passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria held on the second day of November, 2021. And I am so proud to present this to Officer Rafael Torres.
Okay, wait a minute. That's a motion. I.
That is a motion.
Second.
I have a motion. I have two seconds. And any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Officer Torres, any comments? You get to get up there and speak.
Well, it's hard to follow Alfredo, but no, I would like to thank the City Council, the City of Santa Maria, and for giving me the opportunity to work for a wonderful city, wonderful department. And when I started in Guadalupe 31 years ago, I think the best advice I got was from the Chief of Police back then, was Chief Ingstrom. And he said, always put yourself in the person that you're dealing with's shoes, and treat them how you would want to be treated. And I think that's why I'm able to retire healthy, because I didn't have to get into too many scuffles. But it's always been a pleasure to serve the community, especially the youths in Santa Maria, you know, with the Explorer Program, the schools. And I look forward to moving on, but not moving out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't look much different than when you started, Rocky. And the kids at Santa Maria High are going to miss you.
Yes.
They are going to really miss you big time.
You guys are too young to retire.
Thank you for your service.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I had the opportunity of watching Officer Torres work at Santa Maria High. I used to work, being the alias between Santa Maria High and Hancock, and I used to see him every day, doing a great job, talking with the kids, and just being there for them. So always professional, always serious, but always taking care of our youth. So thank you for all your work and support, and we're going to miss you. The City of Santa Maria will miss you. Thank you.
And Chief Schneider. You don't have as fancy of a uniform as the fire chief here, but.
I feel like I'm next to a general. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We acknowledge the members of the appearance of the time, but I actually wanted to thank Alfredo and Rafa for their dedication.
As we've heard tonight, they're true professionals, and they're going to be missed being seen around the department. They've had a big impact, not only in the department, but also in the community, as you've heard. And having their experience, you know, leaving out the door is difficult to replace. But they've been great mentors to others in the department, and I know that they're going to do well in retirement, and I just want to congratulate them. And another one that we have retiring this week, I have to say it because he's my brother, Dwayne Schneider's retiring. This is his last week, and he'll have 27 years in law enforcement and 18 with the City of Santa Maria. So these three gentlemen, again, congratulations. And you're always welcome at the PD anytime. And we thank the family for sharing your spouse with us and everything that you've endured over the years with shift work and everything. But thank you very much.
And I am going to be presenting this proclamation, proudly presenting this proclamation. Whereas Agatha Noel Shorter Lewis was born September 7th, 1950, in Los Angeles, California, to Leon and Martha Shorter. And whereas Mrs. Shorter Lewis graduated from the University of California, Santa Barbara, with a Bachelor's of Science in 1975. And whereas Mrs. Shorter Lewis committed 27 years to the Santa Barbara County Probation Department, and was sworn in as the first black female deputy probation officer in 1976, and retired in 2001. And whereas Mrs. Shorter Lewis served in ministry as First Lady alongside her husband, Reverend Henry Littleton Lewis, Jr., to the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church from 2006 to 2013, and served as both the state and national Baptist level representing the Advisory Council of past presidents and as delegate of the California State Baptists. And whereas Mrs. Shorter Lewis served unofficial and executive roles over many years of service and advocacy work with the Santa Maria Lompoc NAACP with a lifetime membership. And whereas Mrs. Shorter Lewis celebrated life and family with a disarming smile, compassion, and outgoing personality. She passed away on October 5th, 2021. Now therefore, I, Alice Empuntino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize Agatha Noel Shorter Lewis. For her leadership, contributions, and positive influence on everyone she met through her many years of public service, she will be greatly missed. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here this second day of November, 2021. And here to receive this proclamation is her niece that is just so much like her, it's just in the DNA, Danielle Chambers.
First to the Honorable Mayor Patino, City Council Members, and to the greater community of Santa Maria. I am a resident of Los Angeles, California, but I've been coming to Santa Maria since I was a little baby. So Santa Maria is a second home. To me, it is home. As Mayor Patino mentioned, my name is Danielle Chambers, and I graciously accept this proclamation on behalf of my Aunt Aggie. I had the privilege to coordinate the home-going celebrations or funeral for my aunt, all of which spanned over three days. And just as importantly, I had the honor to lay the rest of foot soldier for social justice, a strong and dedicated civil rights advocate for the great city of Santa Maria. She leaves behind a legacy that includes being the first African-American woman to be hired by the Santa Barbara Probation Department. And that was just a few, not that long ago, in the early 70s. And in doing so, a couple alongside that, she did outstanding work and served in various leadership roles as the president and other executive board positions with the Santa Maria Lompoc Branch of the NAACP. At her funeral on Saturday, I challenge everyone that was in the sanctuary and also who livestream remotely with us. I challenge them to really just think about the opportunity each of us have to fulfill or betray the legacy we all inherit. And you may wonder what that legacy is. For Aggie, her legacy was to also just stand up and to do what's right every day, a couple alongside her spirituality. And so I challenge everyone here today, both in person and who are with us remotely as well, to think about, do you betray or do you fulfill your legacy every day? The legacy that you inherit, not just with your parents, the work that they do, but just being a community member. You inherit a legacy to stand up to injustice, to dispel intolerance. And that's what my aunt did. And so thank you for this council for recognizing her work. And thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Agatha Shorter Lewis was a friend of mine, and I can't remember where I first met her, but through Judge Barbara Beck. But anyone that knew Agatha loved her, and she loved everybody. And like I said before, even some of it was tough love. But she was true to herself as a woman. She made an impact in the probation department. It was never the same after she left. And you could say that for a lot of places. It was never the same after she walked out of the room. So thank you very much for being here, Ms. Chambers. We appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the Public Comment Period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the Public Comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the Public Comment Period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I do have one written communication received from Scott Fina regarding the process in which agenda items can be placed on the agenda for council consideration, indicating the current method of the mayor may request the city manager to place items on the agenda provides insufficient transparency. And I apologize, I didn't have a chance to count how many requests to speak, but we have. We have nine.
Okay, thank you.
Two minutes or three?
Let's go ahead and just do three.
Okay.
Okay, Gary Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team. Yes, we are back to continue our plea for help. Please protect mobile home space affordability. Since I moved into Rancho Buena Vista in 2014, the rent on our space has risen from $687 a month to $938 a month. That's over $3,000 a year. That's a 37% increase during times of mostly very, very low inflation. That does not pass the fairness test. Now, I understand that even with a mobile home rent stabilization ordinance or an RSO, space rents will rise. However, they will rise fairly and more consistently with the true cost increases. Not without official floors. Park owners are entitled to a fair return on their investment, and an RSO will provide for that. Now here's a very serious question. Why does Santa Maria still flaunt a model lease enforcement agreement per Resolution 2019-129, which was primarily written by the mobile home park owner's attorney, as being responsive to the mobile home residence needs? It doesn't. It's a failure. It's time to get the mobile home RSO on the City Council agenda. During the City Council meeting at the Veterans Memorial on September 7th, we all heard Councilmember Escobedo ask for the RSO to be discussed. During the City Council meeting here in Chambers on October 19th, we all heard Councilmember Soto request the RSO be put on the agenda. That should be an adequate set of directives to the city manager to finally have mobile home rent stabilization added to the agenda, to start the process, to have an open debate, to do what's right. Let's get on with the mobile home residence, citizens, taxpayers, business. Put mobile home rent stabilization ordinance on the agenda. Thank you.
Lisa, I can't tell if it's Quagliar Simpson?
I'm here again this evening to ask that you please stand up for your constituents here in Santa Maria. We need you to bring mobile home park owners to table. We need to have, open a dialogue whereby we seniors can negotiate a more equitable and fair rental stabilization ordinance. We need your help to stand up and do the right thing in the spirit of Aunt Aggie. Stand up and help us secure our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Armijo, followed by Frank Thompson, followed by Andrea Mayfield.
Madam Mayor and Council Members, my name is Eileen Armijo Insignia. I'm a constituent and live in La Maria Senior Mobile Home Park. I'm here as an advocate, asking you to protect Santa Maria mobile home residents, some retired and some low-income workers who need affordable housing. They have an investment as they have purchased the mobile home but leased the land. All maintenance of the mobile home and the land lease is up to them. Why can't the property rights of mobile homeowners be viewed at least as equal to the mobile home park owner's property rights? The city council needs to place on the agenda rent stabilization ordinance. This would allow for reasonable rent increases with a fair return on park owners' investments, and would also be enforceable, which the model leases not. The people at La Maria have not heard of the model lease, it has not been presented to us. Why is Santa Maria unable to respond to calls for a rent ordinance in support of mobile home residents like other cities and counties around us? Please place on the agenda to support the residents and park owners equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Thompson, followed by Andrea Mayfield, followed by Esther Jensen.
Here again tonight to ask for help in rent stabilization. As we see in the news a lot, we see affordable homes being built for low-income people, and these mobile home parks are affordable home living for seniors but are rapidly becoming unaffordable. I've lived in Rancho Buena Vista now for 18 years, and my rent has gone up 86.1% in those 18 years. If the rent continues to go up as much as it is this year for the next 10 years of this lease, our rent will go up another $500. It's been becoming very hard for most of us senior people that are living on fixed incomes to be able to handle that increase in rent. If it continues to do so, you're going to have another, you're going to have more homeless problems in your city because people aren't going to be able to pay the rent and stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Mayfield, followed by Esther Jensen.
Madam Mayor, Council Members, my name is Andrea Mayfield. I'm the Secretary of the HOA Board of Directors at the Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates. I've lived in the park for 15 years. I have come before you numerous times to advocate for a rent stabilization ordinance for mobile home residents in Santa Maria. I have described the amount of rent increase that I personally have experienced over the past 15 years, very similar to Frank's situation. I have recounted just how ineffective the model lease has been, most notably around two-thirds of the residents in mobile home parks have not even heard of it, as Eileen just described in her park. I have reported that close to 100 cities or counties in California have already adopted a rent stabilization ordinance in their jurisdiction. It was reported on the news just today that Minneapolis, Minnesota voters have just approved the establishment of a rent stabilization ordinance for their city with a cap of 3% increase annually. Now I mention Minneapolis only because the rent stabilization ordinance movement across the country has been utilized by many jurisdictions to help cap rents for low-income families and seniors on fixed income as a response to COVID, all the job loss, and other matters. It's being used across the country. I also work with the Golden State Mobile Homeowners League. That's an advocate for laws that protect mobile homeowners' rights. I talk to a lot of senators, a lot of assemblymen in Sacramento about these various bills. AB 2872 passed this year provides the protections of an RSO by 2025, but we need an RSO to take advantage of this law. I join my colleagues here this evening to respectfully ask you to place the space rent stabilization ordinance on the council agenda. These kind of one-way conversations are getting old. You've heard all this before, I know. We'd like to have a two-way conversation. Please protect mobile home space affordability, it's critical to our seniors and our low-income families in Santa Maria. They're the backbone of this city. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Esther Jensen, followed by Stephen Simson.
Madam Mayor and Council Members, I'm Esther Jensen from La Maria Mobile Home on South Thornburg. We're wondering what it will take for you to understand why we keep coming. The more the expenses go up, the more people are going to be affected. Our wages and savings are from the past years and cannot compete with today's markets. Living at a shelter in our vehicles or on the street is just not an answer for Santa Maria residents. Please act now before it's too late. Put the mobile rent stabilization ordinance on the agenda. Thank you.
Stephen Simson, followed by Steve Malfo, followed by Bill Burris.
Mayor, City Council Members, I'm a retired U.S. Army warrant officer, and I'm here to address rent control and request it be put on the agenda. I'm also the son of a World War II combat veteran and a native Californian. At the age of 18, I registered for the draft, and at 19, I had the opportunity to also serve my country. As a German-language major in the university, I was sent to Germany instead of Vietnam. Being able to speak German, I was able to communicate with young Germans, and soon learned that the sons of German World War II veterans had cradle-to-grave health care that included dental and vision, free public education that included university and trade school, paid vacations, paid sick leave, paid family leave, and rent control. That was in 1973. After 34 years, I retired from military service and returned home to my beloved California only to find that I still live in a country that denies most of these things to my fellow Americans. You have the power to change at least one of those here in Santa Maria. Do the right thing. If the sons and daughters of German war veterans can be protected by rent control, why can't the residents of Santa Maria? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, I have two speakers here to speak on 3F. Do I do this now or when we do the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, you do that now, because again, we don't know yet unless those items are pulled.
Oh, okay.
It would be subject to, so it would be appropriate.
Okay, Steve Malfo, followed by Bill Burris.
to retire. I'm in the wrong business. I would like to begin by thanking the city council for their service to this community. My name is Steve Malfo with Bedford Enterprises, and I'm here today as a member of SMART, which is made up of three small local businesses that have been servicing the recycling needs of the City of Santa Maria for the past 18 years. As of 5:30 PM last Friday night, a new analysis was made available which places SMART's proposal very comparable to the other proposal that was received. Bottom line, we'd like the opportunity to retain this contract and to renew our commitment to continuing servicing the residents of the Santa Maria in their future recycling needs. The RFP process is designed to be a working model to set some ground rules for final negotiations to mutually benefit both parties. We would like that opportunity to do that. We truly believe that the City of Santa Maria will have no increased benefit awarding this contract to an out-of-town company rather than to SMART. SMART currently pays over $3.2 million to their employees over the past five years. This keeps the money here in Santa Maria rather than supporting a Santa Barbara-based company and their community. Santa Maria hires local, and thank you guys for showing up today, spins local, supports local. Our employees live here, send their kids to school here, play on local sports teams here, and participate in local nonprofits. Awarding this contract to an out-of-town company will unknowingly diminish the three local companies' ability to monetize their current recycling efforts. In summary, I would like the city council to consider removing item number 3F from the consent calendar and to consider alternative option 1 recommended by staff. This option is found on page 28 of the city council agenda document. This option is to select SMART to continue servicing the City of Santa Maria to instruct staff to return to a future meeting following negotiations with SMART for Santa Maria recycling park operations and maintenance services. Thank you again for your service to our great city.
Thank you. Bill Burris.
Thank you. I'm Bill Burris from API Way Services. First off, I want to just thank city council for their continuing service and dedication to the community. I'm here today as a member of the SMART team, as Steve said, representing API, Bedford, and Engle and Gray. As a group, our businesses contribute millions of dollars both directly and indirectly to Santa Maria's economy. Directly with the refuse fees we pay at taxes and such to Santa Maria landfill, and indirectly through the great people we employ, and I'm really happy to see a lot of their faces out here tonight. They eat here, they spend money here, they shop here, they send their kids to school here, they play on local sports teams, and they donate to charities here. We have just under 100 employees, and the vast majority of, combined, just under 100 employees and the vast majority of them live in Santa Maria. Specifically, I'm talking about item 3F, the recycling park operation and management RFP. We've provided this service for 18 years, we've had significant interface with the city without negative feedback. The two proposals were received, one from SMART and the other one from Santa Barbara-based Marbord. We were disappointed and confused to learn that the city had planned on moving forward with Marbord. After questioning the original analysis, we asked for and received a secondary analysis, which, on Friday night, as Steve mentioned, at 5:30, we received another analysis which actually marks year number one of our bid lower than Marbord's bid. The only difference is that over the five-year period, we had built in a 2% annual increase. This analysis estimates our proposal would be higher over the five-year period because of that 2% annual increase. It's established within our bid. Whereas the agreement with Marbord has the following verbiage under compensation rate process. It says, "From time to time, as needed, the parties agreed to negotiate in good faith regarding adjustments to the base processing fee, the transportation fee, and the index value credits to reflect unanticipated cost or revenues to the contractor." It goes on after that, that's unparaphrasing, but the gist of it is, the language doesn't specify an annual increase but allows for value to be negotiated as needed from time to time. The value could be more or less than the 2% that's in our bid. Choosing the Santa Barbara-based company is taking away work from local businesses and employees for no apparent economic advantage to the city. It will negatively affect recycling efforts for Santa Maria-based businesses, farmers, construction companies, haulers, homeowners, et cetera. We firmly believe that through a continued partnership with the city, we can find areas to add to recycling efforts and make it better locally. Ultimately, we want to continue to bring best recycling opportunities possible and serve our city. We ask council to please pull item 3F from the consent agenda for discussion and direct staff to pursue option or alternative number one. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. So let's move on, that concludes public comment, let's move on to consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by rural call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Okay, does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I do have them.
Ms. Waterfield?
I'd like to pull items 3E, F, and G.
Okay. Mr. Cordero, Ms. Escobedo?
No others, other than those.
Okay. Let's do 3E first.
Read the title?
Yes.
Okay. For item 3E is to conduct a second reading and adopt an ordinance number 2021-08 approving solid waste collection rates commencing on January 1, 2022, and thereafter each July 1, 2022 through 2025.
Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you, yes. I just need clarification, Mr. Springer, was this the item that came down for the state mandates that determined we had to do this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield, a big cost driver for the rate increases is due to the mandates from the state, which includes organics, recycling, and diversion requirements, that sort of thing, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed to know.
Okay. Let's do 3G.
Okay.
3G is to adopt a resolution authorizing disposal fees for the Santa Maria Regional Landfill effective January 1, 2022.
And I wanted to pull it because I voted no on it, and I wanted to make sure I voted the same.
Okay, thank you. Then 3F.
Also, just want to make a comment, yeah, just want to refer my vote to no on that item, in both.
So we'll take a separate vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
And 3F, Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, 3F, this is very unusual for us because this is the first time, I believe, in my history of being a city councilperson that we had a bidder call and ask us, you know, what the process was. And I went and pulled a lot of the information off of the website to determine, you know, what the procedure was as far as when we put an RFP out versus a bid, and if you could tell me the difference between an RFP and a bid, Mr. Springer, I would appreciate that.
Certainly, I could discuss a little bit the difference. I may defer also to the city attorney regarding that and illegal nuances. In general, the difference between a request for proposal or a solicitation of bids is that the RFP process is intended to be flexible. It is an intent that proposers could submit proposals that meet the city's needs without being restricted to exact details. This allows proposers to utilize specialties to give the city the best option in selecting a proposer to move forward and negotiate a contract. This is in contrast to a solicitation for bids where the exact quantity and the description of how the work is done or proceeds is done whereby the city simply looks at, for example, the unit price multiplies it across and goes down. The RFP process is more flexible for the city to allow, as I mentioned, contractors to submit other ways of doing the work that still fulfills the city's needs and is the most cost-effective for the city.
Okay, and so that's an RFP?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, okay, my question is, so when you put out an RFP and you specifically put in the rules of the game, are those to be changed? for the city to allow, as I mentioned, contractors to submit other ways of doing the work that still fulfills the city's needs and is the most cost-effective for the city.
Okay, and so that's, that's an RFP?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, okay. My, my question is, so when you, when you put out an RFP and you specifically put in the rules of the game, are those to be changed at any time? And let me just read this one part for you, if you don't mind. Enter, this is, would be on mandatory site visits. Interested parties are required to participate in a mandatory site visit on July 21, 2020, at 8:30 AM local time, Utilities Department Administration Building, located at 2065 East Main Street, Santa Maria, California. The purpose of the site visit is to familiarize firms with the city to answer questions regarding the RFP, to discuss any technicalities of the proposed scope of service, and to assess site conditions. The mandatory site visit will establish a list of proposers eligible to participate in this RFP process. Qualified contractors or teams intent on submitting a proposal must have their site visit representative arrive on time and remain for the entire site visit. All respondents must be signed in at the mandatory site visit to continue in the RFPC process. This rule will be strictly adhered to without exception or consideration of cause. Under no circumstances will an alternative pre-proposed site visit be granted. Was Marburg in this? Was, was Marburg in attendance in this mandatory?
Marburg was not in attendance at the first meeting. However, the request for proposals was amended, as allowed in the RFP process. The city is a portion of the RFP, and in the document, and once again, I would defer to the city attorney. Under section 13, at page 16 in the RFP, states, "The city reserves the right to change the terms and conditions of this RFP. The city will notify all proposers initially provided this RFP of any material changes via addendum, by United States postal mail, or by electronic method."
Okay, so I, I will, I will continue, and it says, "Failure to attend this site visit will render a proposal non-responsive, and any proposal submitted by proposals which were not represented at this mandatory site visit shall be rejected." So my question is, because this is the first time this has ever come to me as a city councilperson, and I just want to make sure I completely understand this. Why even put this in? If you're going to put amendment after amendment to allow others to come in, do you just look at the RFPs and decide you don't want them? And then just call somebody and have them come in?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield, that is not the case at all.
Okay.
The reason the initial clause was written that way is that at times, proposers come to the city onesie-twosie and say, "Hey, I can't make this meeting at eight o'clock. Can we do it at another time?" Or, "I want to have a special appointment." The reason we say that it's a mandatory site visit and we want everyone at the same time is to make sure that all proposers get the same information from the city. It's very important for us in the RFP process to make sure that everyone who submits a proposal is basing it on the same information. That's why we want everyone at the same meeting. So it is not unusual in a request for proposals process to issue an addendum. In this case, there were two addendums issued. One addendum allowed for a second site visit. Part of the reason that the city is going through the request for proposals process in the first place is to make sure that we secure competitive bidding for the fiduciary responsibility we have to ensure that the ratepayers are getting the best price for the product.
And did you, did you receive competitive bidding before the addendum?
The deadline for issuing or for receiving proposals was prior to the issuance of the, the addendum. So the addendum allowed for a second site visit, which had additional proposers attend, including Marburg and Waste Connections, as well as various other individuals. I do have the sign-in sheet for both here. So at the first meeting, Gold Coast Recycling attended, Santa Maria, Santa Maria Area Recycling Terminal and Engle and Gray. At the second site meeting, as issued by the addendum, Waste Connections attended, API Waste Services, Marburg, SMART also attended. So the addendum allowed that those who attended the first meeting could also attend the second if they chose.
What's important to me is when we have constituents, a constituent that comes into us and has a council member read this, we don't look at what's normal with bid or RFPs because we don't do that. We depend on department heads to make that perfectly clear. In this case, according to my opinion, it was not clear at all. So maybe, instead of taking your information that you put way in the back of the page, should come under mandatory site visit and put small print, we reserve the right to do whatever we want to on this. And, and that's, that's my, my issue that I have with this because I look at this, Mr. Springer, and I know you're an honest man. You know, I'm not questioning any of that at all, at all whatsoever. But it looks like things aren't on the up and up. And, and I apologize for that, but I just believe that things need to be done a little clearer. And I can understand with SMART, after we've been with them for 18 years and we've established a relationship, we've established the service part of it, needs to take that into consideration as well.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, just real quick, I would, prior to issuing the addendum for the additional site visit, I did query the city attorney's office to inquire on whether it was reasonable and appropriate. And the response from the city attorney's office was that it was appropriate and it met the RFP requirements. I would also like to point out that by having people attend at both of those, SMART representatives attended both meetings. So it is unclear to me how they might be hurt that there might be other competitive prices.
Madam Mayor, if I,
Mr. Stilwell?
So there were some specific questions from Councilmember Waterfield and from public comment. I just want to step back for the benefit of the audience, the other council members, just to explain the issue. So we're required by state regulations to have a recycle park in order to divert recyclable material from our landfill. And the city has had SMART as the vendor for, SMART has been the vendor doing this work for a number of years. And as, as Director Springer mentioned, with other vendors, the city wants to make sure we're getting the best value for, to the taxpayers and the ratepayers. And we do that periodically by reviewing proposals and seeing if there's another business out there that can do the job cheaper or better. The contract for the recycle park is set to expire on December 31, so the time was right for us to see if there are any cost-effective alternatives out there to provide the service on behalf of the city. The Utilities Department, as you've been discussing, did complete a request for proposals process, and we did receive the two proposals, one from the current vendor, one from Marburg. And after evaluating the proposals, staff recommended, recommends starting next year with Marburg. And so the current vendor, as you heard tonight, did express some concerns about the process and the analysis. I take those concerns seriously. They're important for us to dig into those, be able to analyze those questions and concerns. So we conducted an independent review of the process, as the public commenter mentioned, and the analysis was completed. We interviewed all stakeholders involved. With the conclusion of that review supports the recommendation to enter into an agreement with Marburg, which again is the recommended action tonight. The review also confirmed, as Director Springer just said, that the city conducted the proposal process in accordance with the city's rules, accordance with state law. And I'm pleased to report there is no favoritism toward either of the vendors, but there was a concerted effort to follow our policies and to instill competition to get the best price and service for our residents. The independent review also concluded that the two proposals, one from SMART and one from Marburg, were very close. They were close on price, close on terms. And they're both very thoughtful proposals, and we appreciate both businesses, their interest in serving the city and our community. However, with the city's mission statement to provide the highest quality service in the most efficient, cost-effective, courteous manner possible, also our desire to always provide the best service possible following the law and the policies set by the city council, Marburg came out ahead. And the Marburg proposal will provide the city financial benefits and quality benefits. Over the terms of the proposed Marburg, or the terms of the proposal, Marburg will save the city at least $308,000, an average of $62,000, $61,594 a year. And I say at least because the SMART proposal included a couple escalators that we, that the public commenter talked about for fuel costs. That would only increase that cost savings for the Marburg contract. There's also quality advantages. For example, the cost avoidance of the landfill space and the share of landfill operations. SMART included a surcharge for minimum tonnage for processing. And SMART also proposed to return up to 25% of processed material as, quote, residual. And process inefficiency costs the, the city of the, that would cost the city landfill space. And the operations for Marburg do not require residual waste disposals, though those costs are avoided. So that's in addition to that $307,000 savings. And we did have Andrew Hackelman, Assistant City Manager, conduct the independent review. If you would like to hear the details of that review and confirmation he had on the proposal process. And then, again, as Chad has also mentioned, city attorney Tom Watson's been engaged on this as well. But we do recommend moving forward with Marburg.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make, I'd like to respond to Mr. Stilwell's, especially when it comes to the residual. Because even though it doesn't show on Marburg, in their contract, it says, "The residual trash will be taken directly to the Santa Maria Regional Landfill as needed." What the heck does that mean? I mean, that could be a huge price. You talk about gas from Santa Barbara to Santa Maria with the fuel prices? That, you're, you're closing that gap. And if I could ask each employee to please stand up that works for Marburg, please.
Marburg?
I mean, for SMART. Please, just stand up. This, this is people, these are people that live here and work here, and they contribute to the city of Santa Maria in nonprofits, in schools, in everything that they do, and our tax base. So you go back to service and relationships that we have. Sometimes, you know, the lowest bid does not make the lowest bid at all whatsoever. And that's the point I want to say. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't, and I'll make my comments. I will not be supporting staff's recommendation. But I, I think it's really important to me, for me, that we support our local businesses. And I have done this all along. And Marburg is not local. I mean, I've seen it written in the staff that it's local. It is not local, it is Santa Barbara. And in a time where the economy is really sort of, we just don't know how it's going to go right now, and it's growing very slowly, I think it's really important that we support the employees that are, that are working in Santa Maria at a Santa Maria business. But not only that, it's what they bring, put back into our community and put back into our community and our nonprofits who help the vulnerable populations in our community. And so, and I can appreciate where you can say we're going to save this much money, but many, many times, we have not taken the lowest bidder when we have approved things. So I, I think the, the connections that we've built over the years with SMART, and I don't think they were ever told that they weren't doing a good job or that they were underserving us. And so I find that very, very difficult to do that to a local business. And so I will, I would, I wouldn't mind supporting number one, but I will not support the staff's recommendation. Ms. Stilwell?
Yes, I have a question for our city attorney. What implications would the city, would we have as a city if we don't move forward with the, the recommendation that staff presented?
As is clear from the dollars involved, this is a substantial contract for which people will, on both sides, will have a considerable interest in obtaining. My recommendation would be that if the council does not propose to move forward with the staff's recommendation under the proposal as it was drafted, that you direct staff to reject all proposals and enter into a new round of proposals so that you can have a process that seems unimpeded. The difficulty, obviously, in this circumstance is there was a proposal. It, it was discussed between myself and the director regarding the process. And I think that the circumstance is interesting because at the second meeting, SMART did not object to the fact that an addendum was issued nor that, that a second meeting was called. So the, the best activity, if you're not going to support the proposal as drafted and proposed, would be to reject them all and have the parties come back under a new RFP and do it again. Obviously, that's, there's a time consideration here, but the, the most prudent course of action to avoid a potential conflict would be to reject them all, in my opinion.
Are you finished? Mr. Cordero?
I was going to ask one more question. Yeah. My question is not directed to Mr. Springer. If we were to go with that option and reject our proposals and start all over again, how will this impact operations or impact the city?
The existing contract with SMART expires at the end of the year. If staff is directed to reissue an RFP, we would get back together with staff. It would have impact on expense and timing for staff to do that work. And quite frankly, we would have to work with the city attorney about the language that I've heard from the council this evening regarding local preference. I'm, I'm not sure how we would put that in the rating criteria with respect to these proposals. Secondly, we had half a dozen people come out for the two, half a dozen potential proposers come out for the previous RFP process, and we received two competitive proposals. So we would reissue the RFP and see what proposals are there. I would point out that at this time, both parties have seen the, the others' numbers, so to speak.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In, in view of what's been said, Mr. Springer, earlier on this subject matter, I would like to clear something up for myself. Did we, did we, as a city, as an entity of the city, do anything with regard to this Did we, as a city, as an entity of the city, do anything with regard to this that we have not done in the past or is not routinely done? Whether it was immediately understood or not, or where it was placed in your RFP or whatever, do these kinds of activities, these processes that you went through, go on on a semi-regular basis?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cordero? Yes, sir.
Okay. So I tend to agree with Ms. Waterfield that there may be some ambiguity in that. However, this is something that happens on a semi-regular basis, where we have to go out and get two or three or more RFPs, right?
As far as multiple RFPs, or are you referring to issuing an addenda to an RFP?
An addendum, I'm sorry. Yes, an addendum.
Yes, addenda are not -- issuing an addendum is not an uncommon practice in the RFP process.
Okay.
Mr. Escobedo, you had your light on. Did you want?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, having said that, I'm -- in listening to what's been said here, oh, and I -- Madam Mayor, I forgot to report out that I have met with the people from SMART, and we had a discussion about this issue. I just want to report that to you. So, let's see, I got to remember where I was. I'm getting old. With regard to the process that we have here and what I've read and what I've heard, it's also clear that there's at least some ambiguity in the report that we get from Marburg. And the ambiguity being that we will take this stuff as needed. I don't know whether that ambiguity can elevate the cost or may even decrease the cost. But it does speak out.
So, Madam -- if I may, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cordero. So, one important aspect of an RFP process as opposed to a bid process is it is the opportunity for staff to ask questions of proposers, to get clarification. For example, in the SMART proposal, they put certain pricing down for mattresses, and we had to clarify on whether it was an each price per mattress or whether it was per ton and that sort of thing. In the case of the Marburg proposal, the discussion regarding residual is kind of two parts, if you will. The recycling park and the operations that occur at the landfill. There is an immediate presort that goes on, and there's a dumpster that the city sits there, so that things that are clearly should have went up to the pad, for example, if somebody shows up and they have a pickup truck that's mostly green waste, but they have, I don't know, a garbage bag full of trash that they also brought. In lieu of having them empty their green waste and then drive all the way up to the pad to throw that one bag away, staff just directs them to go ahead and throw it in that dumpster. That gets picked up by our staff and taken up to the pad, and there's no cost associated with that. So in clarification with Marburg, when it's talking about the "as needed," it's talking about that that is occurring on the landfill site that happens now. They have indicated that when the material leaves the site, so if that's the green waste that would get hauled to Engle and Gray, whether it's the construction and demolition debris that gets hauled down to Santa Barbara, whether that's the drywall that gets hauled off to the valley, or whatever the case may be, once it leaves our site, there would not be a return of any residual material from that process. So that's in the clarifications with them, that's what it means, is the "as needed" is just simply the part on our site, not the residual. As opposed to the SMART agreement, the residual is materials that leave our site, right? So in this particular case, there's approximately 21,000 tons a year that go to the recycling park. They are proposing that 25% of that, so roughly 5,000 tons, would be able to be brought back to the landfill at no charge. That has a value to the landfill of approximately half a million dollars a year in airspace. If we do not collect revenue for that residual, we have to raise rates to collect that money. And that's part of what we're discussing. So it creates an opportunity cost there. And I'm sorry, I've stepped a little field, but I want to clarify that the RFP process allows us to get that clarification. And that's why in the Marburg, the way it reads in the agreement "as needed," it's simply talking about the onsite, not residual from offsite.
Madam Mayor, I'll just, to clarify Director Springer's point of view. So there is an ambiguity. The folks that run the landfill and know how to do the business, there's not ambiguity. So Mr. Spring -- I mean, just to make a finer point on Mr. Springer's comments, there we request proposal for businesses to come, hey, this is a service we need, we're regulated to provide, how would you provide it? One business proposed it one way, one proposed it the other way. Staff understands how the business runs, and they find that Marburg is cheaper on the hard numbers and cheaper on the opportunity cost numbers.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Springer. I appreciate your answers. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Burris if he could please come to the podium and explain the process you use, that you've been using for the last 18 years.
So the way we've read it, our proposal versus theirs, material leaves the Santa Maria landfill and roll off and goes to the SMART yard on Bed Arabia where it's sorted to the best of our ability. Loads go to the yard over there outside of what goes to the landfill. So the difference in our proposal and theirs is that it's the grinder, the things that we use can't be in two spots. It's too expensive of equipment. So we do the processing over there, and residual is returned to the Santa Maria landfill. The way that we read this thing, that "as needed" part, is that they'll just take what they want out of the loads, that the Santa Barbara-based company will recycle, and they'll take the CND and the things that they're most valuable to their yard in Santa Barbara. The residual won't leave the landfill. In our opinion, the end result is the same amount gets buried. Anything over that that gets buried is made, it's represented in dollars and cents in the proposals. And so what it does is it diminishes our ability to recycle for the residents or for the contractors in Santa Maria.
So then what that does is that it takes away income from the city of Santa Maria and gives that income to the city of Santa Barbara.
It supports recycling efforts for all of Santa Barbara's contractors. They'll be able to bring their ADC here, they'll be able to do, and it'll, you know, the price increase that's also listed on 3G, we didn't mention that tonight, but the biggest increase on that goes from $18 a ton to $25 a ton. And that will kill the SMART process, which was set up in conjunction with city representatives at the time to support Santa Maria-based recycling offer, you know, opportunity. So it's our position that doing this will diminish the ability to recycle and make doing business, make recycling in Santa Maria for contractors, farmers, businesses extremely difficult. It will not support that. To us, that's our biggest point. The original analysis that we received had us down by $2.4 million, saying that we were $2.4 million over five years. The numbers were $400,000 for residual versus zero for Marburg. That's not feasible. It's not feasible to have zero residual. If you're going to -- you're not -- you can't do it. So when we asked for the secondary review, the one that Mr. Hackelman provided, that's the one that's in the agenda packet. These numbers came back, and it's, you know, 1.696 million versus 1.7 on year one. So we're cheaper year one with that 2% built in is what makes our bid cheaper. So then we go back to why for a 2% annual increase would the city turn their back on local recycling efforts and support Santa Barbara recycling efforts? That's our biggest complaint. We feel that the recycling we do over there is a valuable addition to this city, and we want to continue it.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo, did you have anything to say?
Yeah.
Your light's on.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So we were talking about numbers, but I just want to clarify, potential, is there were some numbers though about, you know, the difference between these two proposals? How much are we talking about?
So over the five-year contract, the hard numbers are $307,000. Marburg's cheaper by that amount. And then in addition, there's the larger number that Mr. Springer was talking about of the opportunity cost of not having the residual waste of about a half a million a year.
Okay. And one of the things that I -- that concerns me is the service. So the two that were presented, will those two companies be able to provide the same amount, the same service, or what's the?
If I may, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Escobedo, with respect to the service, to what the customer would receive, I believe that is your question. Marburg currently does work for the city right now. They handle the single-stream recycling for the city, and we have not received complaints from any customers regarding that. That was also done through the RFP process approximately nine months ago, where they competed with both Waste Connections and Waste Management through a very similar process to this, and they were selected based on the best proposal for the best product at the best price, and the council approved that agreement. They currently do operations for recycling. They operate the facility at Tahigus landfill for Santa Barbara County, and they have a large facility in the city of Santa Barbara for construction and demolition debris. There are representatives from Marburg here this evening. If you would like to hear from them about how they would intend to operate the facility and provide service to the city of Santa Maria.
Yeah?
If I may, I would ask the representatives of Marburg to come up and address the council. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Derek Carlson, and I'm the Vice President of Contracts and Finance for Marburg Industries. And Brian Borgatello, our president, is here this evening as well. On the point of the service, you know, I will say that Marburg is, you know, also a family business. We've been in the recycling business for 90 years, and we're four generations into the company with the family, and we have a lot of family in our company as well. And, you know, we have had the occasion where we have come in and we beat out other providers based on our proposals for service and price. And in all of those circumstances, we have given the first opportunity for employment to anyone that's been displaced as a result of this, of any change in the contract status. And I will say that Marburg Industries has benefits that are really second to none. We provide 100% of medical for all our employees. We pay over 90% of their spouse, their dependents, medical insurance. We pay 8% into a 401K whether they, the employee chooses to contribute or not. You can, but that 8% is automatic. We provide three weeks vacation, which we do pay out, or sick time, which we do pay out if it doesn't get used during the year, up to four weeks vacation. So we do take care of our employees as well. I know that there are a lot of happy employees here, and, you know, we think they would find a great home with us as well. We know that if we work to make them happy, they will work to make the customers happy. And that is a commitment we have in all of our business lines and our reviews from our performance and from the reviews that go out for our service that are done by the county of Santa Barbara and the other jurisdictions we serve always come out as the top one compared to any other provider. So we're deeply committed to it, and we show that in our financial contributions to our employees as well.
Can you explain to me the residual?
Yes. So we will not, our proposal is not to bring any residuals back to the Santa Maria landfill that leave the site. So our proposal in recycling the CND is we have a recycling facility in Santa Barbara. One of the big differences in our proposal is we're actually sorting and recycling the CND for reuse, where right now, a lot of it's being just ground up and brought back to the landfill. So we are going to sort it out at our Santa Barbara facility, and we are bringing none of the residual trash portion of that back to the Santa Maria landfill in our trucks.
What do you do with it?
That is going to be on our costs to be disposed of with the rest of the residual material that we generate from our CND facility.
Will that go to Tahigus?
That will, we have, the CND residual goes to Chiquita Canyon, down south.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Springer.
Seems how he brought up the discussion regarding ADC. And that is a term that we use. It's an acronym that stands for Alternative Daily Cover. The intent of ADC is that in lieu of using dirt or soil, at the end of each day, we are required to cover the wastemass so that we don't get scavenging materials and that we don't have landfill gas escaping and that sort of thing. Alternative daily cover is an opportunity to utilize materials, processed materials from the recycling of construction and demolition debris. You've heard the term CND tonight. That means construction and demolition. And it is the product that we use. As Marburg mentioned and was discussed tonight, the quality of the product is also significantly different. When staff evaluated these proposals, we have samples here tonight of the alternative daily cover, both from SMART and from Marburg. As was mentioned in the proposal, Mr. Cantu will show you a bin. This is, the first one is the Marburg materials. This is the ADC material that they would bring back to the landfill that we would utilize. Essentially, you can see it is a very fine material, much like soil. That is the leftover material after they've done their CND process. As you can see, there's very little wood waste in it. That material has been pulled for recycling reuse. The second bin came from a pile of ADC delivered by SMART. We have large piles of this at the landfill. What you will find there is that there are large chunks of wood waste.
What do you do with that?
That is...
How do you treat both?
Right. So the intent of that material is that we would use it on side slopes at the end of the day and that sort of thing. The intent is that we are supposed to be able to compact it, and it would keep landfill gas from escaping or for things to get through. But as you can see in the SMART product, that material will not compact effectively for us, and it creates an operational issue for us at the landfill. And that's part of the discussion. When staff evaluated these two proposals, diversion is part of it. The SMART proposal intends to have 100% of all of the materials that enter the recycle park to be able to come back as ADC, in addition to 25% residual. That means if the recycling park sees roughly 20,000 tons a year, that the intent of the recycling park, as Mr. Stillwell mentioned, is twofold. One, to extend the life of the landfill, which reduce the cost for the city. The longer we're there, the more opportunity it is for us to sell airspace, generate revenue, and also it's an environmental cost. The longer we're at the site, the more we utilize the space, and we don't have to go to those floors as sooner, which is also a financial cost, but also an environmental cost, because that becomes a second industrial site. So the goal of the recycling park is to extend the life of the landfill, and then also to meet diversion requirements as were required from CalRecycle. In SMART's proposal, the 20,000 tons a year that is delivered to the recycling park by individual haulers, their proposal is that 100% of that, 20,000 tons, would be able to come back as that material you see in that bin. All of it, 20,000 tons of it, would come back to the landfill as that material. As you can see, it's, would take up a lot of airspace. That material coming back to the landfill and filling that space is space that we can then not sell to another customer. It's an opportunity cost. The market value of that is $77,000, or $77 a ton. That is why the number that we talked about is, when you look at that cost, it's a cost to us. So we have that material. So when we look at the diversion requirements, the Marburg proposal is to not bring back any residual and only bring the finer material that you say there in a quantity equal to the construction and demolition debris, which is roughly 12,000 tons. So in the complete operation of the recycling park, in the SMART proposal, it would receive 20,000 tons, but 25,000 tons would be buried in our landfill, more than actually is received at the recycling park. That is the way that the proposal is written. The Marburg proposal would be that basically the only thing buried would be the Alternative Daily Cover that's brought back, or roughly 12,000 tons, about 50% of the SMART proposal. So that is a significant opportunity cost, and it fills up space in the landfill.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Mr. Burris, can you? Well, either one of you, yeah. I am looking at the 307,000 per year that was the difference between the two contracts.
307,000 over five years.
Over, I'm sorry, over five years. I apologize. Over five years.
So...
Wait, wait, let me finish my question. Let me finish my question. In regards to workforce, would that be equivalent to 307,000 in the five years as what you pay your employees and then we, some of that gets put back into the city of Santa Maria?
Sure, I understand the question.
Yeah, so my question is, you know, the difference of 307,000 over five years?
Yeah, certainly. And I still contend that the way our contract's written versus the 2% number, you know, the 2% number versus the fact that it says "as needed," time to time "as needed" in the actual agreement. I do want to address how what the ADC sides, over the course of the last 18 years, we have never been notified that our ADC was not sufficient quality. It wasn't in the bid to do it. We use a state standard, you know, product, and that's just screen size. We change the screen size, and we can do something smaller, but we've never been notified that we don't like the ADC, it's too big. And that wasn't written in the contract. That wasn't...
And that was, the city never brought that up to you, it was never an issue?
No. We also, we also get inspected once a month as a surprise visit from the LEA from Sacramento. It's enforced by Sacramento, and we have never had any complaints on our ADC because it meets all the criterias. So if it meets all the criterias and we get recycling credit for it, why would we change it? It wasn't requested for us to change it. And the reason for the ADC, it's not 125%, it's 100%. I think you said it was 125%. If it's 20,000 tons, we request it for 20,000 tons to come back to the city as ADC.
Correct, and then an additional 25% for residual.
That's correct. And as residual...
So that's where I got the 25,000 tons total.
I see it.
I see it.
So, I think they're on the same number, yes? 25,000 tons would come back or would be buried at the landfill?
Well, not necessarily. Because if, if, if Matero, well, first of all, Sacramento, CalRecycle did a report in 2006 that surveyed 90 CND facilities in the state of California. And they came out to the resolution that 23 to 30% based on geographic location was the residual rate. Out of 90 places, it was, I can, I can pull, I don't have it here, but it's 23 to 20 to 30% residual. So, I don't know what Golden Wan somebody does, but if the state saw 90 facilities and they came up with a solution of 23 to 50% or 23 to 30% residual, then that's, we're experiencing about 20, 25% residual. And my thought is, is if that's the case, then if 20,000 tons come in and we take 20,000 tons and we pre-sort it, you can't sort all the other residual out of it. It's too, it's too involved. So, we take it back to our facility, sort it out further with further people and equipment, and then bring back the residual. What I think that's going to happen is it's going to come to the city and they're just going to cherry pick what they want out and not recycle 20,000 tons, maybe only take 10,000 tons back to Santa Barbara and not bring any residual because they left it all at the landfill. And for us, we're just taking it, sorting it out of facility, and then bringing it back. But because of the state mandate, it's at least 23 to 25% residual and it's done on 90 facilities. I, I, I don't know how you can not get any residual out of that. It's impossible.
And the samples that are in those buckets right there, the smaller material, ultimately, my opinion, that accepting that here is supporting Santa Barbara-based contractors and recycling companies in Santa Barbara and turning its back on the contractors and people that need recycling credits for construction and demolition here. That's, that's my opinion of that.
And the reason why we ask for higher ADC is because we accept material from farmers, contractors at our facility. And so, we need a place to take that material, either grind it up as ADC. So, it's always been since the pilot program in 2003 or whenever we started with John Zhao. And, and we went through until 2006 until we had an official contract. We had it for three years as a pilot program. We developed that. They used to pay us for our ADC in the very beginning. They used to pay us a doll, a dollar a ton, and then it went to zero. And then it's, then Waste Management started grinding up all their junk and flooding the market at, at the city landfill for free. And they put a stop to it, say, listen, we'll give you an $18 credit, but you, you'll also be charged an $18 charge. So, it's, it's a, it's a, I pay you, you pay me. It's just to prevent people abusing the system. So, granted, they're, they're correct. We are bringing more ADC back than, than normal, but we have a facility that farmers come to us, they don't have time to go all the way down to the landfill. So, what are we going to reject them? There's steel in there we pull out, we ship to Taiwan, Indonesia, Malaysia, our plastics. We, we, they never mentioned when I, when we sourced 4,000 metric tons of their plastic, their field plastic, and we shipped it to, to India. And India has this exclusive contract with, with Disney. And that's all they do is Disney's, those little puzzle mats for all their, for all their parks. And, and they recycle all that. But, and I made zero, I made a quarter of a cent to do that and, per pound. And, and so, it's, it's like, it was more of a hassle to do that. But they needed it out at the time and I found a place for it. And the current, the current contractor that was managing that did not have a source for it. And that's when we went out, we had our mixed ridges that we ship overseas and, and, in Taiwan and India. And so, I don't know, it just seems like, I don't know. It's just, it seems like it's-
We, we want to continue to serve the city. The facility that we have on Vedderavio has worked in conjunction with the City of Santa Maria landfill for years. We weren't familiar with problems with the ADC or any of those things. We weren't notified of that except through this bid process towards the end. And that, that is concerning to me. We have local employees, local people. We've done this for many years and, and we want to continue to do it. I, I just didn't see a big enough, a big enough difference in those two numbers to-
Did you have any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Were they not notified of the-
ADC?
The, thank you, the ADC concerns?
Yeah. What's the question?
Were, were they, was this bidder not notified of-
No, they, that's just, I, I don't know, we've never heard that, that our, our ADC was ever-
So, once agi-
That question was striking to our staff?
Oh, okay. So, I'm sorry.
So, once again, during the RFP process, what we had was, we had two proposers. The SMART proposal, which includes the ADC that they've been bringing to the landfill for some time. And then we had a proposal from Marburg, which proposed a different product. Well, not a different product, but a more refined product. So, when we evaluate those proposals, we compare what each of them bring to the table. In this case, SMART brought the ADC product you see there to the table and Marburg brought the other product that you see to the table. So, it is a factor that staff weighed. So, I'm not really sure about the question of notification, right? They, they brought their opportunities and their proposal to the table.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. Thank you gentlemen very much. Hey, I'm going to bring this back to the consent calendar and motions. Oh, yes.
Madam Mayor, before we move forward, just so that we're clear, we're going to be taking a motion first on items 3A through E and then separate motions on 3F and 3G. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept items on the consent calendar from 3A to 3E.
Second.
There's a motion and accept, and a second to accept items A through E on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Harry Nun, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Did we do 3E already? Did we?
No, 3G.
Okay, 3, so 3E. We didn't do 3E, correct?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we did? Okay, okay. We did a 3G and, okay, so it's 3F. 3F. We have F and G left. Okay. I thought-
Yeah, well, the motion was to A through E.
I thought it was A through D.
You're absolutely right.
Oh, did you say D?
I did. I, I said-
Oh, okay. Then I heard E, too. You heard E?
I heard E.
It should have been D.
Okay, A through D. So, so I, okay.
So, so at this time, it'd be appropriate to amend your prior motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to amend my prior motion and move that we accept items 3A through 3D.
As in dog.
As in dog.
Okay. Mr. Cordero, is that okay with you?
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Now, did we approve item 3E? I forgot. We haven't done it. Okay. So, okay. Madam, oh, no, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, that's the one you wanted to have stayed from, I think.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 3E as on the, the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve item 3E. Any further discussion?
Just Madam Mayor.
Pardon?
Uh, yes.
Discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to reiterate my, my vote and opposition to this item. I consider that we could, we could go as well as, as we did with the other rates increase. Instead of doing 100, it would be, I would like to see something different like 50% and work on the general fund. So, that's a, that's my comment and I give my vote as a no. Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
This was a state mandate, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Nah.
Okay, got that. So, now we have F and G.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the alternative item number one and 3F. Make determination to select the second proposal from indirect staff to return to a future meeting following negotiations with SMART to consider a resolution approving an agreement for services with SMART for Santa Maria Regional Landfill Recycling Park Operations and Maintenance.
I have a motion?
That's the F.
Is that a second?
That's the F, okay.
Yes. Alternative one.
So, what happens if there's no second?
I'll sec, I'll second it. Okay. Any further discussion?
I have.
Yes, Ms. Soto.
Comment. Thank you. My, my discussion or my point of comment is, first, I want to start by thanking the staff for explaining the process that, that the city had in place to get us to this point now and for answering our questions and for providing us additional context. One of the biggest concerns that, you know, I've oftentimes talked to Mr. Springer about when it comes to utilities and landfill is, is the concern about us trying to have more time with our current landfill. And anything that we can do to, to continue to make space so that we can avoid moving to a new landfill as, you know, is something that I'm really open to, not just because of the cost savings that that's going to have on taxpayers, but also because of environmental reasons. I have to also say that, you know, a lot of this was really new to me. However, the way that it was explained to us made sense. And ultimately, it's not just also expanding the life of our landfill, but making sure that we have systems in place to avoid leaks, ammonia leaks, methane leaks?
Landfill gas.
Yes. Which I'm assuming is really bad. And we want to avoid. And so, I, I, I want to make those comments before the roll call vote.
You know, the methane goes to Marion.
That's what-
That's where it gets used. It gets used. So, it's not like we're not using-
Because of power Marion.
Yes.
Marion gets the benefit of the methane.
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I believe before I would be comfortable in moving forward here that we need a very brief explanation of the, the three options that we have to choose from. I also believe that we don't belong here, in this position. The council doesn't belong here. This, this negotiating and things that took place here tonight, although I, I don't believe it's necessarily unhealthy, however, these kinds of negotiations should have all taken place in Mr. Springer's office or Mr. Stillwell's office. This is not a matter for the council, in my opinion, that we negotiate these things out. These negotiations should have taken place long before now and, and we're an approving body, not, a, a, a policy-setting body, not a group of negotiators. This is just my opinion of our responsibilities as, as a whole. But, having said that, I believe that there's, some of the confusion lies with what I described as ambiguity and that maybe an RFP, Mr. Springer, I don't, I don't know. This is your wagon to work with. Maybe an RFP isn't the right methodology. Maybe we need an actual bid. Maybe we need something that focuses down so that, so that we know that if it's going to be $10 to haul this tonnage, that the other companies, however many there are, is looking at hauling the same tonnage for that same $10 or $9 or $11 or whatever it turns out to be. So, so I, I'm, I'm not happy that, that, that there's not the clarity that I think there should be in this, in the delivery of this contract or this RFP. I, I, I appreciate everyone's questions, Ms. Waterfield's questions, everyone asking about this, but there just still seems to be a level of confusion here and there shouldn't be. We should be able to just look at what you have to say, ask the questions that we normally would ask regarding some things and then move forward with it. So, I, I, I find myself in a position where, I believe you, Ms. Waterfield alluded to it earlier in her, her comments, this is the first time this has ever happened to her in her council business. So, I would be in favor of rejecting everything. I apologize for putting you guys underneath the, underneath the gun here, but listening to, again, to what the three options are and start over with everyone giving us a return on exactly the same thing. So that we don't have this as needed, we don't have the, the residuals changing, all of these things. There needs to be something common for us all to deal with here. I, I think that one person's dealing with, with what their perception is of one product and another person's dealing with their perception of the other product. And I think both companies are probably very reputable. I, I remember hearing about Marburg when I was a child living in Santa Barbara. They've been there, that, there's very few things that are older than me. And they, I remember hearing them in business way back then. So, that would be my recommendation, is to follow the recommendation of the city attorney, reject everything. And we should be, have, we're not starting from the beginning, beginning. I mean, you know, some of this is already done and the figures are there. Maybe we can expedite things.
Mr. Cordero, would you want that done in a bidding process versus an RFP?
Whatever, whatever falls in the wheelhouse of Mr. Springer, if he thinks it's done in a bid or if he thinks it can do it in an RFP, but it needs to be that we're both bidding, we're both commenting, all agencies, all participants, all vendors are commenting on exactly the same thing. One person's using this term and another person's using this term, and here we're arguing back and forth about, what does this mean? What does residuals mean? And how are we interpreting residuals? It leaves too much for interpretation. We need to know that if it's, we're hauling this, what is it going to cost to haul this? And it, there needs to be a little bit more focus on the specificity of the contract or RFP or whatever we decide we're going to do. But it just, for whatever reason, has left too many unanswered questions.
Madam Mayor?
One minute, Ms. Waterfield?
I, I want to hear what Mr. Springer says.
Oh, okay, Ms. Escobedo?
Yeah, thank you. It's a lot of money. I think it's, we as a representative from the community and that that's taxpayer years, I believe that it's our duty to take care of them and take care of, of their interest. Therefore, I would, I like the idea of rejecting and see why, why that's, you know, that difference. Like, we have a more clarity on how we get to the point that, you know, there's a lot of numbers going back and forth. So, I think it's a, it would be appropriate to, to, I would, I would support the rejection of the, of all, of the three options and go back and, you know, take a step back and rethink the proposal from the, from the businesses. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Then I would like to amend my-
Your motion?
My motion. And I would like to see it as a bid to where the city doesn't add their numbers to something that, that companies, how many ever are out there, that they would submit the numbers and we're looking just like Mr. Cordero, just, just like we would do the bigger projects, whether it's streets or whatever in that. Maybe this may not be the right thing to do for a landfill, but we're put in this situation where there is a lot of confusion between the five of us. And we're looking at ousting an 18-year company, a loco company- And we're looking at ousting an 18-year company, a loco company, that has never been told their product was not good and that it needed to be changed. Had they might have heard that, then obviously they would have made their changes with adapting to a different screen that they used to push the product through. So.
Okay, Mr. Watson.
First of all, let the amendment go through and if there's a second, then I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay, but let me finish.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And so I want clarity for everybody involved on this, and I would rather it go to a bid process where numbers are numbers and they're bidding against the fuel prices, the future fuel prices or whatever that may be. So I would go ahead and request that.
Then I would pull my second with that. Okay, Mr. Watson.
You have amended motion.
Yes.
Just to reject.
Yes.
Yes.
Bring it back.
Yes.
I just want to clarify. There is a term of art called bid and that is a different function than what this is. However, having clearly understood the council's desire of having identifiable numbers, quantities, and qualifications that does not result in any kind of items left on the table. We will recreate a quest for proposal that identifies the financial components as well as the residual components that will be coming back to the landfill so they can be quantified and we will have two identical sets of documents. But I don't want to use the term bid because a bid has a very distinctive legal basis.
You know what we're looking for.
Yes, ma'am.
You know exactly what we're looking for.
I wanted to clarify that for the record because I do understand what you're asking for and we will perform that.
Absolutely, and if there's any possibility of adding addendums, please put it right underneath that, those instructions that say you have to do this.
Okay, let's, any other comments? Okay. Okay.
You pulled your second.
Yeah, yeah, I amended my second.
Oh, okay.
So Ms. Soto, did you have something?
I was just going to ask, I mean, just because we're doing this new process, it doesn't mean that. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are seeing to staff which bidder we are.
No.
Is being preferred.
No, there's no instructions on preference, local preference or otherwise. It is to have a true comparison of cost, including those items that have been raised as ambiguities. We will clarify those as costs, which would include certain screening of cover, which would include certain elements related to how much would come back to the landfill and the airspace, which was discussed. So we will attempt to quantify all of those items in that discussion. And I think both potential bidders or in this case, potential proposers also heard that as well.
Like others that may be listening.
We hope so too.
And staff has heard our concerns, so that is good. Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, just want to double check that. Yeah, cost and service, yeah, just, you know, just make it as clear as possible.
Let's have the vote.
Councilmember Waterfield. Councilmember, excuse me, Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
And Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
So now we just have G. Okay.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to pull out of our discussion item three G.
It's already, it's already pulled. It's a motion.
It's a motion now.
Yes. Are you, you're not making the motion? You're not making the motion?
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Soto, you're on.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing disposal fees for the Santa Maria Regional Landfill effective January 1, 2022.
I need a second. I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Well, I was going to second it. I was yawning under here.
I could read your mind there, so. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, just want to make my point as I said the last city council meeting that I do not agree on going 100% increase on disposal fees. I think it's, we need to be mindful of the impact that might have on our taxpayers. And we did the same process, we did a different process with other fees when we raised just 50% instead of 100. Therefore, I keep my vote as no. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
No.
And Councilmember Escobedo.
No.
Okay, we got through that. We have a public hearing now. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish it. This one will be easier, maybe.
Okay, yes, the public hearing item. The city council will consider approving a substantial amendment of the annual action plan for 2019-20 fiscal year, which will reallocate the city's COVID-19 community development block grant funding.
And staff report is to be made by community programs manager, Ms. Rojo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We come before you tonight to conduct a public hearing and ask that you approve a recommendation regarding the proposed substantial amendment of the annual action plan for fiscal year 2019-2020. In doing so, the city's COVID-19 Community Development Block Grant Funding, or CDBGCV as it will be called throughout this presentation, will be reallocated to serve other projects that are aimed to help prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. A brief background as to this public hearing and the public participation process tied to this request. The action plan we are amending is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. The plan details how our CDBG and CDBGCV dollars will be spent. According to the city's adopted CDBG Citizen Participation Plan, changes in the use of funding or substantial changes in the amount of funding allocated to any project will trigger a substantial amendment to the action plan, and that substantial amendment calls for a 30-day public review period and a public hearing. The public review period for this item runs through November 19th. So in looking at the current uses of our CDBGCV dollars, as you may remember nearly a year ago on November 17, 2020, the city council approved a resolution allocating the CDBGCV rounds one and three funding in the following fashion. Public facility improvements were allocated $800,000. Emergency rent assistance was allocated over $739,000 and general administration was allocated over $383,000. And you can see those on your screen. As you can see on the screen, we definitely have a significant amount of money left over after all of the public improvements have been done to finance, fire, city attorney's office, library, and the youth center. And then emergency rent assistance, we were able to assist 70 households with up to three months' rent or $5,000. And then we have used a small, small, about 4% has been used for general administrative costs. So for public facilities, we've used about 35%. For emergency rent assistance, we've used about 37% of what's been allocated. For a discussion at the end of August 2021 with the Public Works Department, there are no more COVID-19-related projects, at least not ones that also meet the definition of preventing, preparing, and responding to COVID-19, which is a requirement of the CDBGCV funding. As for the emergency rent assistance program, the city of Santa Maria stopped offering the program in February of 2021 after additional funding was made available to residents at the county and state levels. Currently, the county of Santa Barbara is offering emergency rent assistance to all county residents, including those in Santa Maria, who have been financially affected by the pandemic. Before that, the state of California was offering emergency rent assistance to residents financially affected by COVID-19, and while the state is no longer offering that and taking applications, it is still processing applications it has received. Both the counties and the state's programs surpassed the assistance the city of Santa Maria is able to offer with its CDBG funding. In addition, if the city was to provide an emergency rent assistance program at the same time as these other programs, there could be a greater chance of having a duplication of efforts situation, which is something HUD has expressed is not allowed and will be monitored for compliance. So the proposed funding is as follows. Since both the public facilities improvements and the emergency rent assistance programs no longer require the funding set aside, staff recommends that the city council considers reallocating the remaining CDBGCV funds to two new projects that fall in line with HUD's guidelines, which emphasize that the funding must be used to help prevent, prepare, and respond to coronavirus. And you'll be hearing that phrase a lot because that's the key difference between regular CDBG and CDBGCV funding. This will allow the city's CDBGCV funding to be continuously expended on eligible projects. The proposed projects are as follows, and you can see those on your screen. We are proposing that 1.1 million be used to provide broadband accessibility primarily in low-income areas and then a little over $150,000 be set aside for the Boys and Girls Club for an outdoor basketball court, along with related improvements. And then to reduce the amount of general administration to a little over 100,000, being that we had originally 383,000 set aside, and in the last year, we've only used about 4%. So a little bit about the free public accessible Wi-Fi. In collaboration with the city's Information Technology Division, the project will provide broadband accessibility primarily in low-income neighborhoods where the need is greater. This would be done by extending the city's fiber network into selected areas and providing free Wi-Fi in public places like the city's public facilities and parks. In doing so, the Wi-Fi will also serve a secondary purpose to provide Wi-Fi to city personnel conducting business and providing city services. Based on documentation provided by HUD, this activity is eligible as long as the primary use of the Wi-Fi is to benefit low-to-moderd income people and areas. And for the Boys and Girls Club, this project was actually submitted recently as a proposal for next year's regular CDBG funding. Upon receiving the proposal, city staff realized that the proposed project meets the CDBGCV guidelines. For this reason, we are asking that the city consider taking this project out of the running for regular CDBG funding and have the project receive CDBGCV funding instead. This project has also been addressed with HUD and meets the requirements of helping prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. The project in question was brought to the city council last month on October 5, at which time the city council recommended that it continue to go through the funding process. By switching this project over to CDBGCV, the agency would not have to compete for regular CDBG funding. This would also free up some of the regular CDBG funding that is usually limited. The agency is asking that if CDBGCV funding is used, that additional items related to this project be included and approved. The reason for this additional request is that under CDBGCV, it's not currently as financially strapped as our regular CDBG dollars are. The additional request, including the initial outdoor basketball court, is estimated to be $150,000. These proposed changes to the 2019-2020 fiscal year annual action plan can be viewed on the city's website. We are accepting public comment through November 19. If tonight's recommendations are approved by the city council, staff will come back at the December 7 meeting for the adoption of a resolution and then submit it to HUD. Now, this wraps up the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time, and I should also add that both Chief Information Officer Jeff Marisick and Chief Operations Officer Roberta Rodriguez of the Boys and Girls Club are here and happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Ms. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, I have a question on the emergency rent assistance. And I guess it's the process of how you evaluate each person that applies for it because I'm getting calls from constituents that are losing their rentals because people are not paying rent. And so how do we, do you contact a landlord to make sure that this is something that is duly needed or how does that work?
So our emergency rent assistance program worked in the same way that the counties is currently operating, and the tenant is the one that has to apply. And the tenant has to prove in some form or fashion that they were affected by COVID-19, financially affected by COVID-19. So their documentation is required, and we found that was the most difficult part of it all is that not being able to pay your rent wasn't enough. You had to have a tie to COVID.
So do you give the applicant the rent money or do you give it to the landlord?
It goes to the landlord.
Okay.
Yes, but if you come across any landlords, please feel free to.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, send them to us and we will be happy to walk them through the process.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, thank you. I have a question in regard to the internet portion of it. So you mentioned that it should be kind of focused or reach to the low-income community, correct? And it would be situated, located in facility, city facilities? Do we have like a map of what areas would those be?
That's a great question, and we have about 12 census tracts that we have whittled down, but we don't have specific ones yet. We also need to find out how many of those areas we can cover with 1.1 million and then, so we just need to see which ones are the neediest out of those 12 census tracts.
Because I can give a couple in Nor- Northwest.
Wonderful, yes. And just a reminder and for anybody watching, CDBG dollars must be used to serve primarily low-to-moderd income areas and people, so the CDBG dollars will be used in our neediest areas.
Definitely, thank you. And you know, one of the learnings, I believe that this pandemic also brought up these, you know, the need for internet access. And I have a lot of my students struggling going to Starbucks, jumping from one place and they're looking for internet. And, you know, not everybody can afford to have internet at home or even their own devices. So, you know, that ended up affecting their academic proficiencies. So I'm excited to be able to help a little bit more in our constituents, so thank you.
Mr. Cordero, did you have any questions? Yeah, this became very, very noticeable when we met with school districts and it wasn't the, it wasn't that it isn't accessible, it just is not affordable for many of our families. And so that's why we really needed to, because I figured we could go to all of our community centers, but they were not, didn't have hotspots, and I didn't know that until we got into this. And so when you're talking to the superintendents, you know, we figure you have to get creative to get these kids so that they can be able to connect with schools. I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
There are no requests to speak.
Any written correspondence?
No written communications and no one on Zoom at this point.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council. Any discussion or direction?
Well, if there's not comments, oh.
Did you have a comment? Oh, okay. Okay, Ms. Escobedo, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to a substantial amendment to the 2019-2020 fiscal year action plan, CDBGCV funding.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero. And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next, who have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes. The city council will receive a presentation on a general broadband, a regional broadband strategic plan for the Santa Barbara County and consider approval of a memorandum of understanding and financial contribution for participation in a regional broadband strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell.
Sure, thank you.
Could you make the introduction for this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So over a number of years, there's been an effort regionally to be able to plan for regional broadband in the county. A lot of the, there hasn't been a focused group to be able to move it forward. SB CAG recently took that role and has agreed to push forward a strategic plan for the region. The council may ask, why would we want to do a part of the planning when we're already doing our own broadband? And there's a couple of reasons, and the mayor did attend the SB CAG meeting last week and articulated these, but one is there is an interest in ours, even though we have our own fiber ring and our broadband, we do have an interest. own fiber ring and our broadband, we do have an interest in regional broadband that's better for our community, better for our region, will provide more accessibility for us and our residents. And then second, we do still have an ongoing concern, as the mayor again just alluded to, to, we have broadband, we have the middle mile, we don't have the final, the last mile, what they call it, which is really broadband into the neighborhoods, and then accessible, affordable broadband into the homes. And so we want to be part of this regional planning effort in order to try to overcome that issue, to be able to not only have broadband regionally, but be able to have it more accessible for our people. And so tonight, we have Margie Kern, who's the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, and Bill Simmons, who's been working long on broadband planning in the county to be able to provide you a presentation of the broadband strategy for Santa Barbara County.
Good evening, Ms. Kern.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We really appreciate your time, and we want to make this as brief as possible, because I know you've had a long night already. So thank you, Mayor Petino, honorable council members. My name is Margie Kern. I'm the Executive Director of Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, commonly known as SB CAG. We are the council governments under a joint powers agreement between Santa Barbara County and each of the city governments, so a mayor or councilperson is on our board, plus the five board of supervisors. We are primarily responsible for distributing local, state, and federal transportation funds, and we act as a forum for addressing regional and multi-jurisdictional public policy issues. Over the past couple of months, potential funding opportunities have been announced from both federal and state governments to provide better access to those who depend on broadband services. When available funding is forthcoming, with available funding forthcoming, the SB CAG Board expressed a desire to ensure that our region is prepared at a regional level to implement better broadband access to stakeholders in an effective and efficient manner. In July, the SB CAG Board formed a broadband ad hoc committee, which Mayor Petino is a member of, plus four other board members. The ad hoc committee formed the basis for the recommendation that went to our Board of Directors a couple of weeks ago to support and encourage the formalized, a collaborative, regional approach to developing a broadband strategic plan between SB CAG and the County of Santa Barbara and the eight cities in the region. The SB CAG Board directed me to reach out to each city and county and request their participation in the development of this plan. And as you discussed earlier, broadband and the lack of quality internet access has been, you know, an issue, especially under the COVID-19 pandemic, and has been urgent for many of our residents that rely on internet service to continue to work and go to school and to shop. So residents in our unserved or underserved communities are struggling to participate in the digital landscape as broadband services are unavailable to them due to the lack of affordability or infrastructure. So before we get to the council agenda, the actions before the council today, I'd like to introduce Dr. Bill Simmons from the Broadband Consortium for the Pacific Coast. We have a PowerPoint that we included in the agenda packet for you prior to this, for the posting of the agenda, and we can go through that PowerPoint as an education and a foundation for the council if they would like to see that PowerPoint presentation, or we can just take questions and move on, and then move on to the recommendations before you. So what is the pleasure of the council?
I would like to see the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Okay, Bill, or Dr. Simmons, you're on.
Well, that certainly is going to be the objective here. You know, I've been working with Santa Maria for many years. The consortium's been around since 2014, and you folks have done marvelous work and, you know, highlighted your efforts in terms of moving towards smart city, and so I realize that the background of broadband is not anything new to this particular chamber and this group, so I was looking in light of the evening to perhaps cut it short, but let me just focus on maybe five slides out of the 19, and so if I can do that. Let's go to what the history of, it'd be slide four, that. Once again, the broadband consortium is funded by the California Public Utilities Commission. So what our job is, up until COVID, our job was to focus on the rural areas. COVID changed everything, you know, in terms of all of the funds that are now destined to end up here eventually. You know, we were funded by the CPUC to help communities really understand what's happening and, you know, all the rulemaking that's occurring and where those funds are supposed to be going. The discussion that happened just 10 minutes ago is very dramatic, because when you want internet for all, you can, how do you get there with the resources you have? And so it's very important that municipalities have the conversation that you just had, and say, okay, we'll start here, it's a priority, but then let's talk about those other places as well, and that's where we can come in and help and say, here's additional funding for the last mile. And so that's what our job is as a consortium. There's, I think at one count, there was as many as 18 consortiums statewide. I think we're down to about 14 at this point, but we were established by the CPUC to have this conversation. Next slide. This is the way we do it. We invite stakeholders, there's a little icon, AITR, everybody, it stands for all in the room. Everybody joins in the conversation. It's, it's important that broadband is dealing across the board, and we're talking not only at the regional level, but throughout the community. And so there is a convening, and we start dealing with stakeholders, and then we start integrating resources and strategies, and then finally, we get to the point of mapping every neighborhood, every census block throughout, and that's how we'll get to internet for all in the weeks and the months and the years to come, hopefully sooner than later. Let's keep going, please. Stop right there for a minute. Broadband in itself is a very complex, somebody once said up in Sacramento, I've got three bars on my phone, why do I need broadband? It has a lot of terms, and what broadband really is, is high-speed internet, no matter how it's delivered. What we as a consortia focus on is the fiber aspect of it. No matter what technology you're talking about, whether it's wireless, or whether it's going to be 5G, DSL, cable, all of it needs fiber. It's how we connect to the internet and build capacity. And so where we spend time wanting to educate and inform is the need for, you've got your fiber ring, but eventually, you're going to probably want some kind of fiber network. You know, if you're not going to do wireless to the last mile, you may want fiber to the home, but those are all discussions that you can talk about down the road in terms of what that last mile is going to look like. And what kind of environment are you going to have? Is it going to be one or two providers? Is it going to be a competitive environment? What is the role of, of the city in this future that you're going to be creating? These are all conversations yet to come, and that's the importance of being plugged in, not only at the local level, but at the regional level as well. Let's keep going. We'll skip the part about Santa Barbara County and the status. You live here, you know it. Let's go and talk about the current funding, the next slide, please. Once again, one of the interesting things that are happening is there's so much funds going to broadband, everybody's kind of waiting, watching. And in the process, nobody's doing anything. And so it's coming from the federal level, it's coming from the state level, and it's, it's waves, tranches, I've never heard the word before, you know, the tranches of funds that are on their way for broadband. But we're tracking it, and we expect that in the next year, 2022, it'll be significant. And if you look at what the governor's done, and where it's at with CPUC, and what they're looking at in terms of the rulemaking now for last mile, for municipal technical assistance, for loan programs, you name it, this stuff is, is on its way. And so trying to shovel ready is the term they all use, trying to get the portfolio of applications within the city ready for these funds coming from these multiple sources to match the strategies and the needs you have, that's what we want to help you with locally. Let's go to the next slide. So this is interesting. We've had, and you've been part of this conversation, a number of you perhaps, the slide on the right is what we call the North County Fiber Ring here in northern part of Santa Barbara County. The CHUMAS have been very, very active in starting this. About a year, year and a half ago, they received funding for a strategy for the reservation, a broadband strategy, and they've been able, over the last year, year and a half, to turn the $50,000 in that strategy into about 12 million in terms of asks, you know, in terms of proposals for NTIA, EDA, and CPUC. And so that is the whole point of a strategy, is to get everything lined up and, you know, in a place where you can highly leverage what the needs are of the community versus the funds that are coming in this direction. What we're really trying to do with the work with SB CAG is regionalize this approach, is not only, based on the work they've done, they're going to be a tremendous catalyst for what is happening here in the north, and in terms of where they are trying to interconnect with fiber, their organ, their various organizations and locations, the Park and Ride that's here in Santa Maria, I believe, I mean, the fiber they want to do, go to that facility, a number of different pieces and parts. The question is, that's just one stakeholder. Can you imagine the kind of conversation we could have if we were involving all the stakeholders, public and private alike, in this conversation? And the maps that could come out, and the capacity that we could talk about and build? So the, we've done a number of projects with the reservation, and there's a number of things yet to come, but more importantly, is the bigger issue, what's going to happen county-wide, what's going to happen in the north, and how do we get all of the other convenings and stakeholders involved in part of this as well? Vandenberg's another story, you know, in terms of what they're doing with their space park. About a year ago, a year and a half ago, prior to COVID, we had a convening, brought in five different providers that are going right down the tracks, and to the point of presence, two points of presence that the Air Force intend to have, very much interested in that, leveraging the opportunity of those providers, that fiber, to a much broader application here through, in the communities nearby. That's an important conversation to have, and we want to take full advantage of having that opportunity to have that conversation. So I think I'm going to stop there, you know, in terms of background, and there's summary slides and, you know, wrap-up, but I want to be more responsive to you in terms of questions you might have, questions you might want to have answered.
Ms. Waterfield has a question.
Okay, so we get the funding from state and federal, from just different sources and everything, and we get broadband to the city of Santa Maria. Is that what, is that what we're doing on the streets right now with the cable, lane, and broadband? And so who's paying for that? Is it the state, federal entities, or we?
No, our current, our own ring is through an agreement with WAVE, and so that's the local city project. There's other broadband being laid throughout the city as well, through other private providers.
Okay, so when we, we get that done and then we deliver it, the people that use this broadband, they don't pay for it, correct?
No, they'll pay for it.
Oh, they will pay for it. That's where my confusion was, right there. Like, how do we deliver it and get free internet? But is it at a lower cost?
Yeah, so there's, you know, there's multiple broadband providers, so the city has its own network. We partnered with WAVE to, and they use the same ring as us to provide service to their customers. They're primarily business providers, so they provide support to our business community. And then Comcast provides it to the, the local homes, and that's where the cost issue comes in, and on that prior agenda item, that's why Wi-Fi in the public facilities provides it out to the broad areas in the economically underserved areas of town, and so people can access that for free.
So the underserved area of, of section of town, will that go into the homes, or go to the businesses by the homes?
It would go to anyone in, near our public facilities that can receive the Wi-Fi signal.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Jessica Bello?
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Turn on the ear speaker.
There you go. And that was, is nice to see after, you know, after all the pandemic and everything. And I have a question in regards, so we're talking about that having a broadband like this would help to have a better quality of internet, correct? And that would, at the end of the day, help our constituents or community to have more accessibility to that? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And what's, so there's nothing, and one of my questions would be, is there any relation between broadband and 5G? Or what's the-
5G is one technology for broadband delivery. It's one of many technologies. Broadband as a term means high-speed internet, whether it's wireless like 5G, or whether it's a cable connection on the back of your television. It's called broadband, any and all, of those high-speed deliveries. Thank you.
Ms. Soto?
Yes, will you be giving us a presentation of the strategic plan once it's finalized?
Yep, we can do that.
I can't wait to see that.
Yeah. Part of the interesting discussion, and I probably am going off script here, there's going to be a role for the, for cities, for municipal governments. When it comes to rural areas, they don't have service because it costs money, and there's no return on investment for industry. And so that has been, you know, and what we've been doing as a consortia is providing state funds for those areas, because the businesses don't go. The same applies for communities in need. You're not, you haven't been seeing the providers go into these communities because, for one reason or another, the return on investment's not there, the density's not there, a number of things aren't there. We're hoping that by getting more resources in there, that you're going to have, instead of the providers having to make the investment, the state will make the investment with the funds that we'll be bringing in. But, you know, there's also going to be part, you know, in terms of best practices in this space, where the communities are going to also say, you know, we have a role here. We want to make sure that everybody is served. We want to, you know, and we want to do everything we can do as a municipality to make sure that we have options for everybody, and that all are served. And so the money will be coming here for you to do that, just giving you a heads-up of coming attractions.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
And, and so basically, this, where we're working is approving money so that a strategic plan can be made. Do we have, do you guys have a timeline, or kind of like, when would that become a reality?
Our completion of the strategic plan, we're looking at May-June of this next year. If we're going to really work to push hard, we're hoping that things don't slow down in Sacramento, that they really do work to get this money to the local communities, and, you know, we're talking about in the next fiscal year, July, being, having an answer, being ready with our applications for the funds that are currently being processed now.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordiero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sir, my, my wife is on the Santa Maria Benita School Board, so I am privileged to a lot of conversations, and it seems like one of the things that comes up so often is that, well, we provided this, you know, the school districts provided that, and all these things, but some of these young kids don't have, whatever you want to call it, the internet, the broadband, the 5G, I don't care, they can't do the same thing and push a button and access the current-day pandemic-style educational system. They just don't have the ability to do that. And I'm asking, and our involvement with SB CAG would make that more available to more young people, more, more people in our community, is that correct?
That's a goal. That's the goal.
Okay, because it seems to me that her conversations always seem to end up focusing in as, well, we've done this, we've provided that, but some of them just don't have the technology. And I would, when we went to that, my, my grandkids, my son went out and he bought these great big, he's got a computer for each kid, bigger than anything I have at home, and they've got all this secret stuff that they, they can access the moon, I think. I'm not really sure on that, but they, they've got all those abilities, and I, and I feel, oh, I guess I just feel bad for some of these young people that, that don't have the same convenience.
Yeah.
And, and I think that, you know, for myself to get one over, it would have to be that we're going to end up being able to ultimately provide a service that is currently not being provided.
Right.
And that would be what it would take for me, sir. I just need to have that assurance that SB CAG is going to be focusing in on the kids that live over here on West Orange Street or on East Orange Street, and that they can, they can all access the same data to- they can all access the same data to elevate themselves educationally.
Yeah. And I don't want to get into name-calling of particular providers or anything like that at this point. There are some providers in certain areas, in all three counties, that their policies and procedures are, you know, you'll subscribe or you're not. And there's some reasons why parents don't subscribe. There's other providers, for example, within the area, where they're partnering with the schools, and, and the parents want anonymity when they make the subscription to the company, you know, for the internet service. And so, what the, what the schools have been doing is giving the students the tools they need to take home, and then working with the providers themselves to pay for the service. So, the parent's anonymity is maintained. The students have what's been given to them by the instructor in the classroom connection, and the provider has their fund. It's a different business process, it's a different model for working, but it is a very innovative solution in these times where we need to have these kinds of innovative solutions. So, it's not across the industry, you know, if some, some providers have it, if you're, based on who's serving your area. What we want to be able to do is extend the conversation so everybody has it. So, it's, you know, and this works for that situation, and insist that everybody try to do it that way, and build the partnerships with the schools to be able to make this happen.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Were you finished with, from IG, or?
Sure, let me just conclude. So, council member, that is the goal, is to have everybody at the table, have those needs identified, and work together to solve those needs and, and come up with a strategy that we can do better as a region in providing broadband to our most needed residents that are underserved or unserved at this point in time. So, that, that's the focus of this whole strategy as we move forward. So far, we've already received commitment from the County of Santa Barbara for this effort. They've, at their meeting a couple weeks ago, they dedicated $200,000 to the effort. So, we're asking each of the cities right now, and you're our first city to ask, that we're asking each city to contribute the remaining need, the remaining needs, $200,000, based on population, so we try to split that up fairly. It was really hard to come up with a formula, to be honest with you, because it's, you know, broadband and subscribers and unsubscribers and, and, you know, rural versus urban, so, you know, we kind of just kept, went back to the default of population because it was kind of the easiest way to divvy that up. So, we're asking for the city of Santa Maria to support the regional broadband strategic planning effort by providing a point person, or two, or three, to help guide the process moving forward and to be part of the stakeholder committee, and also have financial contribution in the amount of $69,810 in partnership with SB CAG, the county of Santa Barbara, and all the other cities that we will be asking in the next few weeks. So, any other questions, or I'll turn it back over to staff, and we'll, we'll be here if you need us.
No, I have no questions. I just wanted to make a motion.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I, I would be concerned, Madam Mayor, that we have, we in the city have made a significant investment in, what are we calling that?
Fiber optic.
Yeah, the ring. We've made a significant ring investment, and I would be concerned about, we don't want to duplicate any of that. If we've already, if we've already bought this portion of it, that we're not saying, well, you know, you can sign on, but you're going to have to get this as well. I, I would be concerned about buying a, a second truck when we don't need one, and, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I think the underserved areas that you are not serving right now and identifying those needs in this planning process, and I, these, these needs are everywhere. They're not just in the urban areas, they're not just in the rural areas. We have communities and neighborhoods that are not being served adequately and are not able to interact with schools and work and shopping and whatever they need to do. So, it's universal, and I think being at the table and identifying your needs is, you know, is beneficial to the residents of Santa Maria.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And in, with this money, because a lot of that money that came for broadband, we couldn't use. This we can use. And, and so, we might as well use it, and it is for the, the strategic plan. So, we, we have our fiber optic that we've been putting on in, what, two years, three years now? And, and so, this is for the plan. Of course, I, you know, I was, I would love to, we're the biggest city, and so the population, but I got outvoted on that one, so. But that's, but anyway, I think it's really important. And this is really, I think, a great committee to be on because everybody agrees we need to move forward on this. And there's so much benefit to all of this, and, and it is a regional type of, of issue. So, anyway, Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wait, before I do, before I do that, do we have any written correspondence or any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so I'll bring this item back to the council for discussion and a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving an MOU with Santa Barbara County Association of Government, the county of Santa Barbara, and the cities of Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, Long Hill, Galito, Carp, Guadalupe, Solving, and Fulton, to include a financial contribution of $69,810 with five cents from the American Rescue Plan Act, funding to participate in a regional broadband strategy, strategic plan.
Two seconds.
Okay.
We got two seconds.
Who got it? That was a tie.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Do you realize how much trouble I would have been in if I'd have voted against that when I got home?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming up here and doing the presentation. We really appreciate that. Good night. Next, we have another regular business item to consider. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive an annual update on code enforcement matters pertaining to the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
The staff report is to be made by Code Enforcement Supervisor, Ms. Castang. Oh, she's here. We'll give you a whole hour, Joy.
Oh, boy.
Is there anything else you want to say?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I would like to start by saying the Code Enforcement Division is very pleased to be providing you an update on our activities for the last year. We have had the privilege over the last year, actually over the last few years, to come and speak with you, and I thank you for the opportunity and the continued support. The Code Enforcement Division, or CED, operates under the city attorney's office with a supervisor, four code officers, and a part-time administrative clerk. Each time our office receives a complaint, we perform investigations which may result in the issuance of a notice of violation, citation, or even administering a hearing. To expand on this a little, these processes can, in some instances, take a great deal of time, not only for the code staff, but also for our attorneys. An average case can close within a couple weeks to months, whereas in cases where abatement is not reached, these cases can last for years. Throughout that time, officers continue to work with property owners, tenants, seeking out compliance, and the attorneys work within the court system to do the same. Over the last year, the CED team has worked really hard and achieved some great accomplishments. We've been able to close 1,766 cases. We've been working 69 substandard housing cases. Nine cases of that alone encompasses 5,000, 5,000 residents, so when you think in terms of 69, it's quite staggering. We've received over 21,000 phone calls, 1,763 violations have been reported, and we have issued 71 compliance orders. Over the past year, we have also further expanded some of our responsibilities. We brought back the walk-and-talk program, increased our efforts with blight, increased our efforts with cases involving trespassing on private property, and with the passing of the sidewalk vendor ordinance and mobile commercial car wash ordinance, we continue to provide education, permitting, and enforcement where needed. The CED also continues to evaluate and where applicable, tries to improve current processes with data gathering and any of our inefficiencies. This is our first year with, our first full year, with the public being able to submit service request forms electronically. Service request forms are how the public can submit complaints to our office, and we operate through these complaints. What we have found is a large reduction in submissions of anonymous complaints, and this was decreased by 63% over prior years. All persons filing, filling out a complaint are confidential, but we don't accept anonymous. It was very unexpected, but beneficial to our department and the community. We're also working to find an electronic method for record retention. Right now, everything we keep on paper. Through efficiencies and really taking a close look routinely at processes and growing through, our, growing through technology, our office continues to handle a great deal more than we did in the past, and this allows us to take on significant tasks that can create large impacts to protect public safety and improve quality of life. As far as what we have seen kind of over this year and what we're expecting to see next year, we really do continue to see more significant substandard housing, anything ranging from significant cockroach infestations or the severe mold case that you see there. We're also receiving a lot of complaints for water leaks, living in homes with no heat, and in some cases, people living in unpermitted locations that are truly unsafe. It's also important to understand that health and safety and blight are very different. The, oftentimes, the exterior of a home looks okay when the inside is very unsafe, and a blighted home that may be very unattractive in appearance may be very safe inside. The CED deals with both, but does focus on the safety and well-being of the residents that are living in unsafe conditions, and we work to get that fixed. Throughout the next year, CED will continue with its efforts involving blight in addition to the health and safety. The increases in blight cases range from personal property in public view, unregistered vehicles, parking on unpaved, even overflowing trash cans. Blighted properties do reduce quality of life and can reduce property values significantly for a community. The CED also has reserved, has observed a significant trend with unpermitted construction. And obtaining permits for construction work is vital to ensure what is done meets the minimum standard of the code and that it's done safely. Our involvement with homeless has also increased over the last year, and CED does believe that this will not change next year. The CED continues to work side-by-side with the Community Services Unit of the Police Department. We address the private property itself that is impacted, while the police or the city rangers address the individuals that are trespassing. A really significant trend that we have seen this year are all the fires that are now being set. They're in just about all the encampments. The CSU and the CED do continue to work with Home for Good, Salvation Army, City Net, and other nonprofits to try to help get folks off the street. We're also continuing to work with mobile commercial washers and the sidewalk vendors. We provide education and enforcement to help both obtain proper permits. To help sustain the needs requested by the public for continued enforcement, the CED does plan on increasing its efforts on nights and weekends in 2022. Weekends and nights, though, are dependent on availability and support from other departments that can assist us. We also plan to start evaluating and researching how we can restructure the division. Again, this is to try to meet the demands of helping improve the quality of life and public safety itself. And finally, to better support what we, what we are doing and our capabilities, the CED is applying for a grant in January to help improve the emergency equipment in our vehicles and office. This grant will allow us to better support other department, other departments and the At this time, I would also like to really thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you, and also express my continued appreciation to the CED team, other city departments, for all their teamwork and support throughout, throughout the year. We're very grateful for each and every one of you, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield?
Hi, Joy, thank you for being here. You're just so, so helpful to all of us. My question is in regards to the substandard housing conditions. For you to go in and look, does that have to be complaint-driven, or if firefighters went in to help somebody and they saw all this stuff, and it was, they determined it being healthy, can they let you know and then you can go in, or if it's police, whatever?
Absolutely. We do get complaints sometimes that are turned in through the fire department or PD. If they're seeing something, we've gotten complaints from other outside agencies as well.
Perfect.
That kind of gives us the reason to go knock on someone's door and find out what we can maybe do to help improve their situation. We just don't go knock on any door and ask to come see their house. We have to have a reason.
Absolutely, no. I was just curious, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hey. Hey, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the work. I know that you guys have a pretty tough one, being the, sometimes, you're not seen as the bad, the bad guys and the bad people, so thank you for, for, for working pretty hard for the community.
Thank you.
And there's one concern that keeps coming back and forth, it's about the homelessness, and, and sometimes the, these conversations I've been having about, why don't you guys just take the homeless, put it in the back of a truck, and just take them to jail, or take them to any other city, or, you know, those kind of, you know, we have a conversation about it. So, could you please, for, for everybody that is watching us, kind of like, talk about, about the, you know, the barriers and the, all the illegal portion of that?
I can absolutely give you some. Chief Schneider is probably the best person with some of that information. We're very limited in what we can do because of state regulations. So, code kind of tends to deal with private property that maybe has homeless trespassing on it. PD will deal with the individuals themselves, as far as trying to make sure that they're safe and that they can go somewhere. The challenges with, right now, with the jail system and everything else, and please jump in at any point, is that there's not really anywhere to take them to. Most of the time, if they do get arrested, it's a site and release. And so, there's not, there's nowhere for them to go. At the same time, they have to actually be doing something that's illegal, so just because they're maybe in a location that maybe somebody doesn't like, if they're not committing a crime, or they're not actually doing something that's illegal, there's not a whole lot that can be done in that situation either. But if I missed anything, Chief Schneider can.
Chief Schneider, would you like to respond to that question?
I think Joy hit it on the number. Homelessness is obviously complex, there's, you know, varying issues of why they're homeless and are actually, you know, working with code enforcement and our community service unit, they do an outstanding job, and they really try to problem-solve and, you know, work on solutions, you know, with, between mental health and trying to connect them to wraparound services that will, you know, hopefully get them on the right path, as opposed to just taking them and putting them somewhere and making them someone else's problem. So, she's right, it's just, there's, sometimes there's limited things. I mean, taking them to jail is not necessarily the best solution unless they're inebriated or a danger to themselves or something like that. And then again, oftentimes, it's a site release potentially, unless they can't take care of themselves, then the jail would hold on to them, so. So it's just one of those things that I think we just have to kind of work through and kind of find long-term solutions. But, you know, as you can see, it's happening more and more throughout the city and, and other cities throughout the state and country. So if I had all the answers, I'd be writing a book or something probably about it.
And also to clarify from a legal perspective, again, homelessness is not in and of itself a criminal act. Where we run into difficulty is in past practices, there was an opportunity to involuntarily detain individuals who may have mental health issues. That is no longer available as a, as an option in the state of California. So without the wraparound services where we significantly rely on non-governmental agencies and, and local charitable agencies, we just don't have the, the enforcement mechanism to physically move an individual. So again, what we deal with and what, what Joy's team deals with is the collateral effect of homelessness, the accumulation of materials, the, the, the fires, the other elements, but the individual themselves, we can only provide services on a, on a voluntary basis and they have to be willing to take those services. And that's part of the difficulty, an ongoing difficulty throughout the country with homelessness.
Thank you.
And that's really unfortunate that, that was taken away from us, that we can't provide that because a lot of people need those services and they won't accept them, but they need them in order to get, get off the streets. So any other questions? I, I have one question for you. What can we do to make your life easier? What can we do, what else can we give you? I guess even in terms of resources to, to make this department even, even better than it is.
Wow. I thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, more people would be the absolute best. We're spread extremely thin. I think we do a phenomenal job with what we, what we can do, but there's so much more that we could be doing and we could be doing it a little bit, taking on the bigger projects if we had a little bit more staff. But I'm very grateful for that question.
Thank you. Any other questions, the council?
How many staff members altogether?
Right now, we have four. So we're four code officers plus myself and then we have a part-time clerk. We do have the approval to hire one more person, which is great, but we're actually losing one. So we're now going to be down two people. And that's just sort of kind of the tip of the iceberg because to try to do weekend work and stuff like that, again, it takes more people and more resources.
Thank you.
And just to be clear about one thing, it's, it's our policy that we do not send code officers out individually. There have been issues for safety purposes that are dealt with, particularly, and I, I have to compliment Joy and her team, they took a, a pummeling on the car washes verbally. They were menaced and therefore, when we go out on weekends, we have to have both the available police resources as well as at least two officers. So that's part of our discussion of restructuring is to restructure internally and also look at the necessary team to have a, a longer work week, if you will.
Tom, what kind of protective items do they carry with them when they go out?
They, they wear bulletproof vests.
And that's it?
I mean, you start with that and you also have, again, pepper spray. You know, we're not, we're not arming our individuals, but, but what, what we've done is again, a lot of, a lot of de-escalation, you know, walk back, call PD or walk away from the situation and we'll revisit it with more team members. But, you know, my, my people's safety is my primary responsibility and, and they've been trained to make sure that, that if they're in an unsafe position, that they just simply back away and will come back and deal with it.
I don't remember, but do you carry a radio on you when you're out?
Yeah, we do have a-
Okay, right here?
Yep, we have a police radio that we also can call in our locations and it's got the little emergency button that you can hit that will automatically go to dispatch.
Has it turned any physical contact, nothing?
It depends on your definition of- Yeah, we've had, we've had a few on the weekends that have been a little closer than what we're accustomed to. Not only from a verbal standpoint, but just from people doing things you would not normally have ever expected the public to do. So that's been a little interesting. At one point, we had someone go online through social media and talk about where our location was and it was go get your guns and go shoot them down. So because they were opposed to what we were doing. And unfortunately, a lot of times what we're trying to do is honestly is protect public and, and assist and it's just somebody who doesn't understand what's going on because they haven't had a conversation with us.
And is that from a specific group or just being a part of, of different groups?
It's, it's mainly just kind of spread out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Castings, for your report. Please extend to your whole department how appreciative we are of the job you do because you guys do a great job.
And thank you so much. Thank you for so much support.
So we have another regular business item to consider. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider providing policy guidance to the California Citizens' Redistricting Commission relating to district boundaries for California's congressional, state senate, and state assembly.
Staff report is to be made by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The California Citizens' Redistricting Commission is charged by the California Constitution to draw congressional, state senate, and state assembly districts that are geographically compact and contiguous and that the geographic integrity of any city, county, neighborhood, or community of interest shall be respected to the greatest extent possible. The commission has asked for the public's help to plan and draw new assembly, senate, and congressional lines. The finalized maps that the public will help create will define all 80 assembly districts, 40 senatorial districts, and 52 congressional districts. These new districts will impact how the public will elect their state and federal representatives for the next 10 years. The public is encouraged to participate in the redistricting process, which is expected to be completed by the end of December 2021. Staff has prepared a resolution to provide comments to the commission from the city of Santa Maria. The proposed comments are in the form of the resolution. Two main points are to strongly encourage and respectfully request that the Citizens' Redistricting Commission keep the city of Santa Maria, the northern Santa Barbara County region, and the entirety of Santa Luis Obispo County whole and together in one congressional district, state senate district, and state assembly district in order for our community to be served by the most logical, efficient, and effective representation possible. We also focus on consistent with cities and regions as a community of interest, the city of Santa Maria should be included in districts that include the rest of northern Santa Barbara County region, north of the Gaviota Tunnel, as well as the entire San Luis Obispo County. And so we have put this in the form of a resolution for the council's consideration to adopt, add, change, amend, and the council's under no obligation to do any of that, but we do think it's helpful for the commission to receive official input from the city of Santa Maria. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Stillwell? Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Bring this back to the council for any discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution providing policy guidance to the California Citizens' Redistricting Commission regarding the designation of district boundaries.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Poderro?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
No.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
That's, we have our last business item to consider. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
I know it.
The city council will receive the financial report for the first quarter ending September 30th, 2021.
And the staff report is made by Finance Director, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the first quarter ended September 30, 2021. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and enterprise funds. The beginning general fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unaudited balance as of July 1st, 2021. Concerning city revenues through the first quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are nearly $557,000 or 8.6% greater than the first quarter last fiscal year. The increase is primarily due to growth in allocations from the county and state pools that are generated from out-of-state and online sales made by customers who live in Santa Barbara County and California. In addition, sales growth in building and construction, business and industry, and general consumer good categories also contributed to the higher revenues. These increases were offset by declines in fuel and service stations. Through September, TOT receipts are approximately $370,000 more than last fiscal year and slightly ahead of estimates by about $75,000 or 2.6%. Normally, the summer months produce a large portion of TOT annual revenues, but COVID has changed travel patterns and as a result, staff anticipates TOT receipts will be received more evenly throughout the year. NHIS revenues, excuse me, NHIS revenues earned in the first quarter are $459,000, an increase of about $298,000 compared to last fiscal year. Although the majority of NHIS material received came from Chevron-San Luis Obispo Tank Farm Project, the city was informed by Chevron that NHIS from this sizable project will be sent to Cold Canyon Landfill beginning in January 2022. Chevron also stated that NHIS from the Guadalupe site will no longer be delivered to the city because Guadalupe facility is modifying its facility permits to enable Chevron to place a certified closure cap over the existing NHIS material in that, at that site. As a result, the city will only receive NHIS material from smaller and miscellaneous cleanups such as Santa Maria Cemetery or other projects driven by development or vacant land. Given the significant reduction in anticipated NHIS deliveries and decline in activities during the winter months, staff is estimating that NHIS revenues for the remainder of 2021, 2022 will be minimal and continue to significantly reduce in future fiscal years. Permit revenue is at 37.7% of budget or approximately $788,000 and is 26% greater than the first quarter of last fiscal year. The city has seen an increase in the number of permits for accessory drilling units in the first quarter. Permits for the new commercial pad for Raising Canes at Enos Ranch West Shopping Center and the Carpenter's Local 1800 New Trade School facility also contributed to the increase in revenue. Turning to general fund expenditures, they are 22.1% of budget and include about $1 million of, or 2% of salary savings due to vacancies in several operational departments. Staff expects to achieve additional savings, salary savings because the, the city, like most businesses, are having difficulty finding and retaining personnel in the current labor market. These budget savings, combined with the latest revenue estimates, are expected to eliminate the need for the $1 million leave transfer that was budgeted to balance the budget. Concerning Measure U, through the first quarter, revenues are slightly ahead of budget at 26.9% or about $5.9 million. Expenditures are at 18.9% of budget or approximately $1.4 million under budget. Most of the budget underrun is in the fire department and is due to budget of about $1.1 million for the purchase of two fire engines that are planned for later this year. The city attorney's office is under budget because one code enforcement position is vacant and the library and recreation parks and parks programs continue to be somewhat limited by COVID-19. Expenditures and finance are the annual leave, levy loan payment to the solid waste collection fund. Through September, 91% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 4% on youth services, and 5% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.6 million. This variance is due to the semi-annual debt service payment for the 1997 Certificate of Participation and 2012 A refunding bonds that occurred in the first quarter. Water and wastewater operational expenses are under budget by about 12%, primarily because of fewer repair and maintenance, maintenance expenses incurred to date and personnel savings from vacant positions. For the solid waste fund, expenditures exceeded revenues by about $256,000. Capital expenditures of $1.1 million toward the construction and expansion of the landfill liner accounts for the majority of the year-over-year increases in expenditures. The transit fund's first quarter revenues are more than expenditures by about $1.7 million, primarily due to receipts of grant revenues for future operations and capital projects. Fair revenue through the first quarter is approximately $230,000, which is about $44,000 or 23.7% more than the pre-pandemic receipts for the first quarter of 2019, 20. The fair box ratio through September 2021 is 38.3% and that's based on the operating expenses paid to date. That concludes my report for today and I'm here to answer any questions should you have any.
Any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Waterfield?
We had a really good run on the NHIS program. It really brought a lot of revenue and it was our life-saving unit for many, many years. You know, I, I'm sad to see that Chevron has, chose other avenues to take their soils to. So since this NHIS program was, the, the funds were designated to the general fund, I assume what's remaining will stay in the general fund.
What we have collected to date will continue to come into the, the general fund. There are operational costs that are associated with accepting that and so those would be offset. So that, that's where we would have the, where those expenses are incurred, the revenues to-
Right, right. I just hope it doesn't become a washout. That's what I'm hoping it won't. That won't occur.
I, I understand. As you stated, Councilmember Waterfield, NHIS has been a strong source and in it, but it always, we have always known that it's volatile and we, we weren't sure how long. I think those of us that have been here for a while didn't think it would be this long.
Well, it really brought a lot of revenues for our leave fund and it, you know, it saved us from, from going under.
And I think that was about the time that we built, we, we got the new fire stations too and so we had to put personnel in those fire stations and we used that and then crossed our fingers hoping it would continue.
Rick Sweet and Tim Nest just were very smart in that design.
Any other, any other questions from the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Thank you very much for your report, Mrs. Harvey. The next item will be the report by the city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Two items to note. One, so the council at the last meeting authorized us to sell, to refinance our water and wastewater bonds and so I'm pleased to announce we did have the city's bond sale this morning and the savings will be in excess of what was identified and authorized by the city council. So the, the council anticipated, or at that time, we anticipated had authority from the council to save $10.8 million over the life of the bonds and with the sale, the savings will be closer to $12.7 million. So we're pleased to announce that. And then the next meeting of the city council is November 16th. We do anticipate a closed session starting at 5 o'clock, just for your calendars. And then the main- session starting at 5:00, just for your calendars. And then the main item we anticipate will be a community presentation. Where's a couple, there are a couple we're working to schedule, but it's a good opportunity for us to, now that we're open again, to have our communities, groups that are doing work in the community that's aligning with the work we're doing to come and present that to the council and the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So, now we'll have oral reports of council members. Shall we start with you, Ms. Soto?
Yes, I, I attended the State of the City. That was before this meeting, right after the last one. Yes. Um, thank you for your presentation.
Early in the morning.
Early in the morning, yes. Thank you, Mr. Stillwell, for the presentation. Um, so, I, that's my, that's my report. And then I also want to acknowledge the group of folks that are here again today and also ask for clarification on how things can be added to the agenda when requested.
Ms. Waterfield? Don't, okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, October 20th, I attend the State of the City. 23rd, I attend the Battle of Badges fundraising. By the way, I got, I brought my, my t-shirt. Yeah, congratulations to the fire department. It was, it was really fun. It was good to see the families. Uh, I got some, some of my friends playing as well. It was, it was a lot of fun. Uh, I came along with my, with my dad, actually. And, um, so that was, that was a good day for son and, son and dad day. On the 24th, I attended Dia de los Muertos Celebration that the city put together in front of the Berranz Hall. I brought my, my nephews. It was, it was a lot of fun. They just tried to pull me in different directions, but it's a, it was, it was, it was a really good day for, for the community. The 27th, I attended Santa Maria Fair Housing Training. Um, the 29th, also I serve as, uh, judge for the Halloween custom contest downtown Fridays, which has been, which was really difficult. I mean, just in the first, uh, mayor, just in the first section, we had close to 90, 90 participants and we have close to half an hour to check those customs. So, it was really tough. It was really fun. And the best part was a, a good day for Santa Maria. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I also attended the State of the City meeting out at the airport. Um, I must say that it was more informative than it is when it comes from the whole county and UCSB gets involved. I, I was more attentive to the, to the things we learned regarding our city. Uh, I also attended the ribbon cutting out at Toyota. That was an outstanding gathering. There were people from Los Angeles that were here representing the regionally, the Toyota business. And I spent, my wife and I spent quite a bit of time talking to some of the employees and it was outstanding to hear some of the feedback about how they get along with their employees and how successful they are to work with their, with their employees. Uh, I also attended the Fair Housing Training. I had the very esteemed honor of representing the council and being a pallbearer for Chief Centeno. Uh, it was, um, uh, difficult at best and he left a huge footprint in the community that anybody's welcome to try to fill. And then today, I was at the services for Sue Sword, who is also another, um, pillar in, in the community as a community builder over the past 45 years or something like that or more. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, along with Mr. Stillwell, did the State of the City address on October 20th. And then I did the State Council on Developmental Disabilities statewide self-advocacy. On the 21st, I attended SB CAG in the morning and then APCD in the afternoon. On the 22nd, I had, I had the privilege of going to Merrill Gardens and wishing Florence Sassy 100th, 100-year birthday and congratulating her. And it was hard to believe that she was 100 years old because she really got along very well and recognized her family and her great-grandchildren. I attended the West Coast Customs Hall of Fame dinner at the, at the end and they were in town for that weekend. Um, on October 25th, I did an Intro to Human Trafficking webinar. On the 26th, 27th, I did Marion Foundation Board of Directors and another human trafficking webinar. On the 28th, did the City, City of Santa Maria Fair Housing Training, attended the Memorial for Chief Centeno. On the 29th, I had a webinar on reducing land use and zoning restrictions and had the privilege of doing the Halloween costume judging at Downtown Fridays. The place was packed. They had expected maybe 60 kids total and they broke it up into three categories and there was 90, I guess 90 in the first category. And, and so many original costumes. So, it was, it was really neat. They were really into it, really into it. Then there were people with costumes that didn't even enter the, the contest, so. November 2nd, I attended the Memorial for Sue Sword and I just want to, I want to close the meeting in Sue's honor tonight. A lot of people, she was a quiet woman in many ways, very involved in, in this community. And she passed away on October 17th, 2021 at the age of 96. She was born November 4th, 1924 in Rosebud, Texas, the youngest of five sisters and one brother. She went to elementary school and high school and decided that she wanted to be a, a business lady. And she said, "I didn't have time to go to college and be a co-ed. I just wanted to be, to a commercial college in Waco," for her business training. And she had received scholarships to attend, um, the Baylor University, but decided she wanted to go in a different direction. For some reason, she came to Santa Maria in 1945 and then she met Earl Julian Sword, who was an Army veteran and a Santa Maria native. And she came here in 45 and they married in 46. Um, and she began, began work as administrative clerk at Our Lady of Perpetual Health Hospital, which is now, which is sister, referred to as Sisters, but part of the Marion Regional Medical Center. And she was employed there. And then in 1948, she, her business career began to take shape in earliest when she began employment as an accountant for the Santa Maria Valley Railroad Company, then owned by Captain G. Allen Hancock. So, her experience led her to the positions through the, through the company. And after 52 years and three and a half months of service, during that time, she was chief clerk, she was assistant auditor, auditor secretary, treasurer, manager, vice president, and eventually president of the Santa Maria Valley Railroad. And that's when she retired. Also involved in the board of directors of the Santa Maria Railroad and the La Brea Ice Company. A great philanthropist in our community. She worked very close with the Hancock's and with what they did in our hospitals and gave a lot to this community. And so, I would like to close tonight's meeting in the honor of Sue Sword. This meeting is adjourned.